Presentation?
Yes. Alright, is that okay? Did you want that? I was thinking about it this morning. That you wanted that to be said like?
Actually, it would be better if you did it. If you split these squares and take the middle. Is that actually the right corner?
Right.
Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for November 10th. Would you please rise and we salute the flag. Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's good to see so many folks here today. We are going to proceed as follows. After our presentation of the Service Learning Grant recipients, we are going to do Agenda Item #47, which is our proclamation honoring the program. We'll get into that later. And then, since these are going to run into our 9:30 time sessions, we'll then do our timed items, our public hearings, and then we will return to the remainder of the calendar. So the flow today, we're going to do Item #1, #47, and then we will do our public hearings. So first, I came for Mr. Forbes and Janice Lehman to come forward to make a presentation from the Service Learning Program recipients. And the Board remembers this is a program that we turned over to the Youth Commission. We're glad to have you overseeing this program, and it has just blossomed. So we're happy to welcome you here today, as well as all of the students that are here today representing the five schools that were awarded the grant. So Janice.
Good morning. As an educator and one that worked with at-risk youth for the thirty-something years of her career, this is just a really exciting program for me to be a part of. It's a privilege, although when we're reading the grants and they're all piled up there, it's not always that much fun. But we do the very best we can to make sure that we are doing what you want us to do, and that's awarding worthy programs that we know can really work with this kind of student. So before I do that, I know we have Youth Commissioners here, and I would like them to stand. As I said, they work very hard. It's not a glamorous job, and we don't make any money. So, but that's okay, because what we get to do is more important than that. So I would like to start by introducing our first recipients, and they are from J.J. Carrance Continuation School.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stacy Reeves, and I am here representing J.J. Carrance along with my wonderful students.
Hello, my name is Jesus Camacho, and I am a senior at J.J. Carrance High School.
My name is Matthew Sanchez. I'm a junior at J.J. Carrance High School.
Hi, my name is Salida Figueroa, and I'm a senior in J.J. Carrance.
This summer, students from J.J. Carrance High School in Lindsay partnered with the Step Up Service Learning Grant Program and the Reconnecting Youth Program to teach students how to mentor younger children. After group training sessions, each student teamed up with a 5th or 6th grade student and worked one-on-one to teach important subjects such as tolerance, character building, and social skills.
Our project is going to be mentoring at the Washington School, the elementary with the students. We might be going in classes and just helping with the teachers, like whatever they need help with their students, and like kids that need like a bigger brother and sister.
The Reconnecting Youth students are the Step Up students, and they are going to be going over to the Washington Elementary School, working with anywhere from K through 6th grade students. The school will identify the students that may need a big brother, a big sister. They will go over and read stories, work on tutoring, different assignments. And so it will give our students the opportunity to connect and be a leader and a role model for the younger ones. And it will help enhance their self-esteem and self-awareness. And they will hopefully own and adopt some characteristics and qualities that they will find important.
We're just there to help, pretty much, just to be an older person in their life, just to help. It's a big brother, big sister role, just something to make a difference in someone else's life. We're still getting to know everybody, but we're getting to see that we could trust people that we didn't know before. It helps me learn life goals that I need to know to talk to people I don't know, I haven't met, helping me learn new people and, I don't know. It goes so far, it's kind of hard to say.
It shows like the little kids that we're going to be mentoring that just to be like a better person, maybe when they get older, they're not as bad, or they could be a better person to the community and help out the community.
Well, just learning from someone else's mistakes, I think, just to let them know what you went through, and you don't want them to do the same, you know, kind of give them a heads up that it's not the route you want to go.
It prevents kids from feeling alone. It prevents kids from being alone. It prevents kids from sitting at home, not having a thing productive to do. It gives them a lot of ownership.
It's keeping me out of trouble, you know. I'm here helping other people. I'm not out messing around, you know. I don't know, I'm thankful that we have it here, because without it, this school, it wouldn't be the same. It's just, you learn new people. Everything's just so different when you have these kind of activities and stuff going on. Especially at this age group, you know. A lot of people close up, you know. So, I don't know, I think it's real good.
I make myself feel like I can be someone, and I put myself out there, like I want to do things, and I want to make myself like a better person.
I believe in the program, and I feel very honored and blessed to be a part of it. I feel honored to be the R Y teacher. And I feel honored that the Step Up organization funded, has funded us for the last two school years. And it's been a great blessing that if I didn't have it next year, it'd be really hard to maintain, because there won't be any money to continue what we're doing, and we're making such growth, that why turn back now?
The Service Learning Grant Program is sponsored by the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and administered by the Tulare County Youth Commission.
Well, it has been a, it is a great honor and privilege to be here with my students today, getting to share their growth and experience. And before they get to share their experience, one of them will be speaking on something that we spiraled in addition to what we weren't able to share previous involving Valley Children's Hospital. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to my student, Jesus Camacho.
Just have you pull the mic up. Just pull the mic up a little bit. There you go.
You got it. Thank you. I had the opportunity to work with the student that was deaf and mentally challenged. Well, he had to use sign language. I assisted him with his seat work, matching picture to picture, and helping to write his name, you know. I look forward, I know he looked forward to, I know he looked forward to my visit as I did. The opportunity allowed me to learn parenting skills, showed me how to be patient and understanding. It also allowed me to learn sign language. Kind of nervous, you know.
Everybody's behind you.
Well, I like this program, because it has also allowed me to do what I love most, and that is helping others in need. As long as I know that I helped that student gain some experience, that's what makes me happy. I hope that our school can continue benefiting from the Step Up program, which will allow us to continue doing service learning projects that will benefit others besides ourselves. Thank you.
I would like to start, for thanking you guys for giving us the opportunity to be a part of this program. Since we've been in this group, we have connected with the PR Department of Valley Children's Hospital, and we are able to help some of the less fortunate children. The group has really come together to make a difference in these children's lives. Every time we gather ten aluminum can tops, we better the odds of life versus death, because every ten caps pays for a procedure or treatment for a child in need. As of today, we have gathered over 1,000 caps. Each one represents our care and compassion we have developed in this group.
I would like to start, that I am honored that I was asked to be part of the Step Up program and be, and be able to learn more about myself and about others. I learned to be more tolerant and respectful towards others, as also as this world is a place of diversity that we all need to find peace and harmony so we can coexist with one another, without controversy or drama. I also learned about self-esteem, being responsible for myself and my actions in positive steps, and making good decisions for myself. It is a great pleasure that in behalf of J.J.'s, J.J.'s Carrance of Step Up students, that we present this award to you. Thank you.
Like, as we do this board, what we'd like to do is each supervisor will go down, make a few comments there, and present students with a proclamation, receive a little gift. And then, we'd like to ask all the students to stay around to the end of this, because we'd like to get a group picture as well.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to give you this proclamation honoring J.J. Carrance High School for its participation in the Step Up Service Learning Grant Program. And I think as this video that you just saw, it's rather a very unique program that where high school students mentor younger students. And I remember going through high school many years ago, and school that it seemed like there was a division between the older kids and the younger kids. And the older kids never, ever sat down with the younger kids. And it was, I think it really touches the young children that you talk to and you mentor, and they, you become a role model to them. And I believe that you learn a lot of very valuable experiences, and I'm sure patience is one that we're always learning about. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you this proclamation, and I think it's indicative of how successful this program's been, because this is the second year that they've participated in the Step Up program. So thank you very much for your participation.
And again, if the students can hang around till the end of this, probably about 30 minutes, we want to make sure we get a group photo with all the students. Next, we have District 2 Tech Prep High School Advisor Heather Lutrell.
Good morning. My name's Heather Lutrell, and I'm an English teacher at Tech Prep High School. The project kind of started out first being just for Tech Prep, but we actually opened it up, and we were able to have students from all the campuses from Tulare Union High School District. So I was very excited about that. I'm going to let the students introduce themselves, and they can say what school they're from.
I'm Josiah from Tech Prep. I'm a senior.
Hello, my name is Jared Jolly. I'm a senior at Tulare Western.
Hello, my name is Ethan Rodriguez. I'm a senior from Tulare Western.
Hello, my name is Alex Fernandez. I'm a senior at Tulare Union.
My name is Samantha Gonzalez, and I'm a junior at Tulare Western.
My name's Jeanette Gonzalez, and I'm a junior at Tulare Western.
Hello, my name is Hector, and I'm a junior from Mission El Cajon.
Hello, my name is Seth Grant. I'm a junior at Tulare Union.
Working together this summer, high school students from Tulare planned, wrote, and illustrated six books for 2nd and 3rd grade children. The theme was the Six Pillars of Character Counts. Funding from the Step Up Service Learning Grant Program provided the team with the resources needed to produce the final product.
What we're doing is, we're writing little like books for 2nd graders, you know, teaching them character counts, like being respectful, responsible, trustworthy, and this.
I wanted to create an opportunity for students to be role models. I think that's one of the biggest things that especially adolescents can do. For me, I thought character counts was kind of like the perfect little segue to it. And I just see that, especially the kids that I've been working with this summer, just have so much to give. They've had a lot of experience. You know, some of them have had different obstacles in life, so it was just really a great opportunity for them to kind of step up. And so I just thought it was kind of a beautiful project for some of these kids to kind of celebrate that.
Jimmy is a boy. He wants a pet snake, but he has to show responsibility first. So he goes to the zoo and, you know, sees the snakes he likes. So he takes out the trash and shows that he's responsible enough to have a snake, and he finally gets one.
The purpose of this project is to, you know, feed the minds of like, you know, 2nd graders to be a better person, you know, like being responsible, showing, you know, how to be respectful and all that.
It's really giving students an opportunity to, for the most part, I think, be role models. And I think especially for kids' days, that's one of the most important things. They need to see themselves. They need to see that they're a part of society, and they can contribute to society.
I learned that you have to use your imagination a lot. And it teaches you just how to be a better person, you know. It gives you something else to do instead of just, you know, sitting at home. If you look at the pillars and then you write the stories, you feel like, oh, okay, maybe I should follow this example as you write it down.
As far as the book goes, challenges, getting it done, sitting up late, making sure everything's right, colored and everything, I think inside, it helped me a lot. Got confidence up a little bit to do it again and help out more. A little bit makes me want to be like, be a better role model for like the younger ones so they grow up knowing what's right and wrong.
The group traveled to elementary schools in Tulare to read and mentor to the younger children about lessons they learned while creating the books.
It's called Jimmy Gets a Snake, and it's on the character count is responsibility. One hot summer day, Jimmy and his dad decided to go to the zoo. Jimmy was so excited because he wanted to visit the snake exhibit at the zoo.
The Awesome Adventures of Educating. What's that about caring? Educating was enjoying ice cream, and then on a quiet Sunday afternoon walk, we noticed a missing dog sign. After looking at the picture of the sign, we realized that the missing dog was his friend Omar.
Now, I kind of want to write more books, just because it's fun, and give back to the elementary schools that helped me, you know, learn how to read and draw and stuff.
It's giving them something else to do. Like it gives them a mindset or a goal to do something. Like you never know while you're doing this if, oh, well, maybe since, you know, I'm having such a fun time doing this, I don't need to be doing other things. And it gives you a great idea, like maybe you want to be a writer someday.
I just think it's phenomenal, because it's really giving students an opportunity to, for the most part, I think, be role models. And I think especially for kids' days, that's one of the most important things. They need to see themselves. They need to see that they're a part of society, and they can contribute to society. And just looking at the different programs or the different projects that were funded, I think it's going to be nice to see that there's a big group of students that are going to make a huge impact on their communities.
The Service Learning Grant Program is sponsored by the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and administered by the Tulare County Youth Commission.
And we've placed before you a copy of all the students' books. This project, when I wrote the proposal, you know, I kind of thought it was a great idea, but when it was completed, it far exceeded any of my expectations. Watching the students create the books, I gave them really limited guidelines. You know, I kind of explained to them kind of the 2nd graders, how they are cognitively. I kind of gave them guidelines of how many pages the books should be and things like that. And they pretty much then went on their own, and I kind of just stood around and would give, you know, bits of advice. But the greatest thing for me was September 25th. It was the first time we went to go read to the students. And I didn't have the final copies, but they made, the publisher made some mockups, so we'd have books to show the kids. And when I put the books in the students' hands, they were like, they're really books, you know, because I told them they'd be down. But I think they kind of thought it'd be a little spiral, and you know, from the photocopy machine. And just watching them look at the books was amazing. And then, what I loved is when they stood before those 2nd graders, they became, you know, young men. And they opened their books, and they were so proud. And there were just some of the cutest moments at the end, because the advanced register Tulare was phenomenal and kind of coming in, taking pictures of the whole process. And so they were there, and the photographer's taking the students' names down, so their heads were kind of down. And one little girl comes up to Jared, and she pokes on his head. And he looks up, and she goes, "I love your kittens." And then she runs back and sits down. And it was just those little moments. And at the end, some of the kids would walk up and ask questions about the stories. And the best part was, with one of the classes, the kids turned around and looked at their teachers and said, "When do we get to write books?" And so it was kind of neat to see that. The great thing for the students is, these books are also going to be in all of the elementary schools in Tulare. But kind of the greatest thing happened about a month ago. I got a call from the Character Counts Advisor for the county. And she said that, you know, Jim Vidal, he wants a copy of your books. And so we actually took a copy of the books to one of his regional conferences to share with the other county superintendents what Tulare County's doing. So hopefully, they'll make more copies and they can be in the more schools in Tulare County. So very exciting, I'm very proud of the students. So would anyone like to talk?
Yeah.
First of all, I would like to say good morning to everybody, and how are you guys doing today? Oh, ever since I was a little kid, you know, I've always dreamed about being an artist. You know, well, now that I've accomplished, that I've actually illustrated a book, I can say now that little kids can check out my books in any library in Tulare. The project gave me the opportunity to be creative and keep the deadlines, most important, to be a good role model. For the greatest, the greatest part of the project for me was that when I read to my niece and nephew, they actually understand the book, but they don't even know how to talk. I really understand the importance of this project. That is, if you're really going to do something, you know, as long as you have the inspiration, the right determination, really do what you really want to do. You can go far in life, you know. That's all I can say. Thank you.
I say hello to you guys, and thank you for everybody who set this program up. It really touched me aside, because it just gave me the opportunity to give back to the schools that, you know, helped me learn how to read and write. And I just wanted to pass it on to the next generation of kids. So thank you, guys.
Hi, and good morning, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity of giving me a chance to write a book and let every kid in the elementary schools read them. I'm proud, and I want to thank Lutrell also. And I just want to say thank you.
Well, guys, you did a great job. Those books are wonderful and I really enjoyed going this summer to go and see you guys actually film a video and I was able to sit down with Ethan and Jared and learn about the Kung-Fu Kittens before they even became reality. So you guys did a great job and I really gave you a great opportunity to interact with younger folks and show that you can be role models to younger people. And I don't know how many of you have brothers and sisters that are younger than you, all of you, or do any of you not have younger brothers and sisters? Okay, well, I was gonna say, it's a great experience for you to be able to do that, but thank you for taking advantage of this opportunity and thank you, Ms. Latrell, for putting together this project. I think you guys have done a wonderful thing for the youth in Tulare to be able to see these books created by folks not too much older than them. And it's also spreading throughout the county and hopefully even further beyond that later on this year. So congratulations, thank you very much, and please come up and receive this proclamation and let's all pose for a photo. That's yours. All right. Get right in.
Next from District Three, we have La Sierra Military Academy of Visalia Advisor Renee Moncada.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, they can be coming up while you're doing that.
Actually, I've kind of just put together, it's Supervisor Van Der Paul, thank you for giving students at Tulare Joint Union High School District the opportunity to step up and use the logo and show Tulare County elementary students that character counts. We've put our names in the other books.
Great, well, thank you.
And I want to thank you for this award, it's gonna be great to actually have something on my walls. Everyone always comes into my office and says, "You don't have anything, your walls are all white." And I say, "Well, I'm just new," so now I have something decorated. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board, and thank you for having us this morning. I do want to make a quick announcement and say thank you to all the veterans that are in the audience today, tomorrow's Veterans Day. And today, in a very special way, happy birthday to all the former Marines and current Marines in the audience. Today's the 234th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. My name is Renee Moncada and I serve as the Administrator of La Sierra Charter Schools with Tulare County Office of Ed. I'm both pleased and proud to report today on the impact that your efforts through the Step Up Grant have made. Our proposal was to take computer and technology surplus from school districts within Tulare County and repair them in order to give them to children and youth throughout the county to further their educational goals. And I think you'll be able to enjoy a quick vignette here of Project PC.
This summer, the Step Up Program has given a few of the students at La Sierra Military Academy not only a chance to stay busy over the summer, but to repair broken computers and donate them to needy families in the community. These young men and women have provided opportunities to families and children to experience what most of us take for granted, while at the same time keeping busy and learning about something new.
Yes, these were donated to us to donate and we just go around places and we donate them to help other people out that don't have privileges to use the internet, get on a computer.
We're like benefiting like other kids that don't, that can't get onto computers and can't get access like this, so we're just, we're just helping out.
Working on this project has meant a lot to me, actually. I've never really had a chance to work with computers and it's really interesting, I've always found them interesting and now that I know a lot more, I mean, it's nice.
I've seen a big change and a lot of them are very responsible. They are, they own their own actions, they take charge. I can assign them tasks and come back with very little supervision, it gets done. It's absolutely fantastic.
After, when you work and you actually do something, it feels, it feels good, it helps, it helps your confidence, it helps your attitude.
My life would probably be sitting on the couch at home right now.
I don't do nothing during the day, so it keeps me out of trouble. I met friends, it's fun, it's educational.
Instead of staying home and messing around, I'm actually doing something useful with myself.
Really helps me keeping me off the street. If not, usually I'd be walking around all day. I've got a better connection with people at school. I'm not always out and about and always at home.
I've been very, very grateful for you guys allowing us to have this program. All nine of our students excelled. I am very proud of all nine of our students, so thank you.
The Service Learning Grant Program is sponsored by the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and administered by the Tulare County Youth Commission.
At this time, I'd like to have each of the cadets come and introduce themselves before we have a student speaker for you.
I'm Ty and I'm a sophomore from University Preparatory High School.
I'm Anthony Enriquez, I'm a sophomore at La Sierra Military Academy.
I'm Cadet Corporal Nictor at La Sierra Military Academy.
I'm Corporal Martinez and I'm from La Sierra Military Academy.
My name's Jonathan Early, I'm a cadet from La Sierra Military Academy.
I'm Mrs. Gutierrez, I'm from University Preparatory High School.
I'm Cadet Corporal Guevara from La Sierra Military Academy.
Let's give them a round of applause. The experience received was far greater than we had imagined with this grant. And here to report on this experience is Cadet Corporal Anisa Nictor, who is a sophomore at La Sierra Military Academy. Anisa?
Thank you, sir. During the summer, we, we didn't really know exactly what we were getting ourselves into. We thought it was just a summer job, just to hang out with friends and just to work a little bit, but once we started meeting with everyone at Family Builders, we realized what a big difference we were making. And once we got to bring all the computers and we were going back and forth from the van, we brought in 16 computers. Everyone's faces lit up and were, "You guys are donating all these computers for us?" Like, they were really surprised that we were just doing it just to do it. And when we found out that we were donating computers for high school graduates that couldn't afford them, and when we made our computer lab for the kids to do homework and to play games and just to hang out and just like everybody else, and it felt really good just to help out. And at the end, when we found out the skills that we didn't know we had in the beginning, we realized that we can use them in further jobs and just be able to help out, like, "Yeah, I can do that, I can rebuild a computer," like nothing. So that really helped out and I'm really, I'm really glad that we participated in this program and I hope that other, other students would like to continue to do it through the next couple of years. Thank you.
Mona Chadwell, who is the Executive Director of Family Builders Foster Care Agency here in Visalia, sent a special letter to our supervisor, Mr. Cox, and it's really for all supervisors in Tulare County. And this is what she writes, "I would like to take this opportunity to commend La Sierra Military Academy and Tulare County Step Up Grant for the wonderful donations of refurbished computers made available to our agency, Family Builders Foster Care in Visalia. Family Builders serves over 200 children throughout Tulare and many of the surrounding counties, many of which cannot typically afford a personal computer. With the advances in technology and the demands in education, students are often hard-pressed to accomplish their educational goals without the use of a computer. When La Sierra Military Academy proposed partnering with Family Builders to make this connection with our worthy youth, we were delighted and jumped at the opportunity to make this reality with your support. Through Project PC Summer Program at La Sierra funded by Step Up, Family Builders received a computer lab in our children's room located in the Family Builders office. In addition, refurbished computers were also donated to recent high school graduates who had emancipated, emancipated out of foster care because they turned 18 and recently graduated from high school. Further, refurbished computers went to children currently in foster care and who are achieving good grades and/or made significant progress academically. We can't thank you enough for making this possible and please rest assured that this investment to our most needy will go a long way for years to come." Here to present also a plaque in thanksgiving to our supervisor, Phil Cox, and to the Board of Supervisors is Cadet Enriquez, and the plaque reads as following, "In sincere appreciation to Supervisor Phil Cox, District Three, your unwavering efforts to personally make Visalia a better place to live for all residents and your outreach to our youth in bridging positive opportunities have led the way for creating a recipe for success to countless teens. On behalf of students and the staff of Project PC, we thank you very much."
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to thank the students for participating in this event. I was actually able to be present while they were delivering the computers to the foster agency. It was a wonderful sight to see these young people working together. And the thing that impressed me most is someone forgot an extension cord and didn't think I'd remember that, do you? They had all these computers and not a cord to plug them in. And one of these young men stepped up and said, "I'll take the blame." It didn't take long, he said, "I'll take the blame, I should have grabbed them." And that's the quality of young people we have here, people that are ready to accept responsibility for their actions and today, accept credit for your actions as well. So I'd like to present this proclamation to La Sierra Military Academy for participating in the participation in the program and we hope it can continue for many years ourselves. So if you guys want to come forward for a photo op.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Junior Serta, I am a social work counselor with Orocy High School. We were, we had the opportunity to do some great stuff this summer with your guys' help. And I'm gonna let these students that are here, these aren't all of our students, we actually had about 13 students that took place, took part in this, in this project that we did, which was a mural that we painted on a wall that, that was always getting tagged up with graffiti. And so I'm gonna let these students come up here and say their names real quick and what grade they're in.
My name is Doris Serna and I'm a junior at Orocy High School. Hi, my name is Deia and I'm a junior at Orocy High School.
My name is Yarali Montagona, I'm from Orocy High School.
My name is Maureen Agler and I'm a senior at Orocy High School. My name is Jesus Gonzalez and I'm a junior at Orocy High School.
My name is Luis Arvissu and I'm a senior at Orocy High School.
Orocy High School students teamed up this summer to make a big difference in their community. Led by local muralist David Arenabas, the group chose a large wall known to attract graffiti and painted a mural showing the city's true colors. The kids spent their summer nights working on this project with their peers in hopes to make the town a little brighter. With the help of the Step Up Program, students from Orocy were able to complete this goal and produce outstanding results for their town. Not only has the wall changed drastically, but the students have grown to appreciate art, hard work, and the opportunity to make a difference in their community.
It's a painting we're doing for the community so our community can look better and so there won't be any more tagging and stuff like that. Orocy's known as being, you know, with gangsters and stuff and we just want to change that so it can look better, so people can see a better side.
Well, I learned responsibility because I had to be here every day on time. It helps a lot because I really don't do much stuff and it'll keep me out from the streets.
I just like coming here because I know I'm gonna do something good for the community and stuff. Well, the biggest challenge is being like able to communicate with all the different people. We sometimes will see eye to eye, but like at the end of the day, we make this bond. So that's like overcomes everything. I didn't really care about the community and stuff, like I didn't really care about Orocy color, but now I look at it different and I want to change it.
It helps the kids and the kids in the community because instead of being out there doing bad stuff, which this community has a reputation of, they're actually doing something.
I think this shows them like, there's people out there that want their community to be different and they wanted it to be safe like it used to be. And I think by this, it will probably make a change.
The Step Up Program benefits the community because it will make students work as a team and it will make the community better. Yeah, it's really hard for people to work on a mural and just for a guy to just paint over it, which is hard. It's really sad.
Like if they come in graffiti as well, I'd be pretty mad because I've worked a lot on it.
I just wanted to say that Step Up has been like part, well, part of my summer this year and I think that everybody should like at least try to like get into a program that can change some of, some of the community.
The Service Learning Grant Program is sponsored by the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and administered by the Tulare County Youth Commission.
Just for the record, we were tagged. We were kind of counting the days before, we kind of knew that maybe we were taking a risk and doing this project. We were tagged, but I'm here to tell you guys and glad to tell you guys that it was covered up really quickly and it hasn't been tagged since. And so it might have been just a little test for us to see what we would do as far as if the mural got tagged. And I think we passed that test and I think that we're gonna be fine. I think through this grant, we were able to do something really great for our community, which was to show the community members that, that the community as a whole, we want to change. And we want to make that positive change so that we can make our community a little bit brighter and stop some of the, some of the ugliness of the graffiti that's, that's been going on for a long time in our community. So on behalf of the students that are here, myself and Orocy High School, Cutler-Orocy Joint Unified School District, we want to give this little token of appreciation to our supervisor, Steve Wordley. It reads, "The 2009 Cutler-Orocy Step Up Service Learning Students wish to thank Supervisor Steve Wordley for his support in our, in our mural project. He has helped us step up for our community."
Did you all get to notice that in every one of the presentations, you guys got billing every time because they were doing that Step Up, it was your mural at the bottom that they're showing there? You know, this particular location where this work was done has been a problem for many, many years. The property owner is actually a client of mine, is an attorney, and he was forever clawing me up and saying, "I'm tagged again, I'm tagged again." And it was, you know how that is, it gets painted over, but it never gets painted over completely, the colors don't quite match, and so it's almost as ugly to have it painted over as to have it tagged. And so it is, you know, when they did, took on this project, there was some trepidation, I think, by the property owner as to whether or not this was going to work. And it, I was able to be over there one of those summer afternoons, it was about 105 degrees and, and the kids were out there painting and making progress. And I wish you could have seen the completed because obviously this film- because obviously this film was made before it was completed because the mural really turned out very, very well, very attractive. And I am just so pleased that these kids were able to come together. I remember talking to Junior about this. It was quite a mix of children, students that are involved in this from different backgrounds. And one of the things they learned was the ability to get along and to work together and to achieve something of significance. And I think that was as valuable as the end product in itself. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate the Step Up program, what it's been able to accomplish in all of our communities.
Next we have from District Five, Citrus High School in Porterville, Advisor Kathleen Pearson. While they're coming up, I think this is the first time any of these students or advisors have seen these videos as well.
Good morning. What an honor to be here and to be representing Citrus and to be able to say thank you for the opportunity to build what I think has been a wonderful program for us this summer. I have four of my extraordinary young men who are with us here today, and just want to thank you. I'm very, very proud that we've been able to not only help the community, which you'll see on the video, but that we also have been able to reach out to the elementary schools. And we are continuing because the money, the summer has ended. We have been approached to continue. We now have two elementaries we're working with, with a third one coming on board. So, without money, we're still making this a viable program for our community. And that's because of the seed money and the efforts of the county board supervisors. So, we want to thank you.
This summer, the students of Citrus High School in Porterville gave back to their community in a big way. In partnership with the Step Up Learning Grant Program, Kathleen Pearson, the principal of Citrus High, decided to ask Step Up for a grant that enables students to work in the local animal shelter throughout the summer. The work program included daily visits to the shelter for feeding, grooming, and helping care for the animals.
I'm Kathy Pearson. I'm principal at Citrus High School. And Citrus was put in the request for the grant and was awarded it to have my kids working in the temporary shelter, working with animals this summer, not only to help out the town and the community service part of it, but also to gain this empathy, this understanding that comes with having responsibility for and taking care of something.
I come here to work and clean up the animal kennels and take care of the dogs. It gives a job to the kids, and it helps the people get to know the animals and take care of them and know what's going on here.
I try to get social with the animals so, you know, they can be alright with people as well as like other dogs. So, what we do is like, you know, we would take them for walks, like twenty-minute walks, play with them. Yeah, and stuff like that, and we feed them, we bathe them, all that necessary stuff.
We cover the shelter on a full-time basis. The first student goes in at eight in the morning. They work four-hour shifts, and they kind of overlap for an hour, and they stay till five in the afternoon. And so far, the kids have been really good about being there. I treat them just like if they were on the job. I don't take excuses for not showing up. And they've been really great about fulfilling their obligation.
It's taught me how to like, how to want a job more because after this, I'm gonna want a job. Because I like, at first, I was like, ah, but now I actually like the whole... The thought of waking up and actually having a job that's consistent in a way.
I learned a lot of things here. I mean, teamwork is a big one, actually. You know, you gotta cooperate with other people who accomplish things, and you know, it's the best way to achieve.
This fall, these hard-working students have the opportunity to mentor younger children about work ethic, respect, and other skills they have learned while participating in the program.
The second part, we've already started to work on this, is to have them work with the elementary schools. We're already finding gang issues down in the fourth, fifth, sixth grade. So, they're gonna be going to three or four of the elementary schools and working probably through the whole year, working with small groups of kids, talking about issues of bullying and harassment and those kind of things.
You know, just trying to like make an impact on these kids, you know, like just kinda like set them straight, like on the right path, you know? Because, you know, who wants kids, twelve-year-old kid joining in gangs and stuff, you know?
It's kinda funny that, you know, they were, you know, little kids, and they did the same thing as I did. And I was like, okay, I act like them when I was a kid, but they can change. I feel like I not only matured, but I feel like I grew as a person. I think us coming to talk to them would make them change for the better. Because, you know, they know what someone's been through, and okay, you know, we know what's right and what's wrong now.
Well, it's pretty calming because I'm learning stuff about them. I could relate to their past, and hopefully, they'll, you know, straighten up. I guess, you know, it could be good for the community. Be great in what they do, I guess, and like when they get older.
I think we could make a change in their lives. It just helps you all around, grow as a person. Just by doing this, by talking to a little kid, I could've changed his life, you know what I mean? Well, it just showed me a lot of like responsibility. It just helped me a lot. Like, it put weight on my shoulders, and I just lifted it up. I mean, like, I've been doing really good, and it's just been... It's been showing me the light, the good light.
I want to thank the county. I want to thank Supervisor Ennis and everybody who has put forth the effort into this because I promise you, my kids have just really thrived and done wonderful with this. And they've learned a lot, and they've grown a lot with this money. So, I want to just thank the people who are responsible for it.
It's my pleasure to let the stars of that movie introduce themselves to you.
Good morning. My name is Zachary Harris. I'm a senior at Citrus High School. And we... I just went blank. We went to the, we were, I started out where we signed up for a job for the animal shelter, and I thought it was gonna be nothing, but it ended up being a big thing. So, I, you know, I said, "Okay, I want to do something and be seen in this community." So, where I'm seen, I know, you know, they know me, and I did something. So, I wanted to do something. And it was fun. It's the first time I ever had a job-like opportunity other than family jobs, so it was nice. I got to get up every morning, take care of these animals, and it was great. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Robert Allen Espinosa, and I'm a senior at Citrus High School.
Hi, I'm Miguel Trillo, and I am a senior at Citrus High School.
Hello. My name is Orlando Valdez, and I'm a senior at Citrus High School.
All right. Well, you see, like Zach was saying, we worked at the animal shelter for the summer, but like in the video, that's not all we did. We were helping out little kids. And I just want to thank you guys for not only the opportunity to let us be in the program, but to actually be able to make a difference in somebody else's life. Because not many people could do that, and you know, you can't always... Not everybody could say that they made a difference in somebody else's life. Like, you know, I look at those little kids every Wednesday, and I see that they look up to us, and it's a good feeling. It just, it makes you feel like you're doing something, like you're helping people. And that's why I'm happy that I'm in this program, so thank you.
We're extremely proud to have been working this program in the summer and to see it continue to grow. And Representative Ennis, would you like to join us?
I had an opportunity to watch these guys in action firsthand, and let me tell you, these guys know how to write rap songs. I went to Olive Street School, and they had these kids all writing rap songs about their future, and what a great program. I mean, sensational. And also went out and watched them firsthand at the animal shelter. So, this group has really, and look at them, they're styling today. All got their ties on. I mean, I'm proud of you guys. So, we would like to present you with this proclamation, though. It's very well-deserving, and you guys continue the good work. I've seen you in action. You're doing a whole lot for that community, and just keep it up. And this proclamation is just a small thing for your thanks. Thank you so much. Oh, well, thank you, guys.
Surprise, and we're very thankful for the time and the efforts and your support. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
He did rehearse this.
That's fine. Hey, you guys look sharp. I've watched you in action, so I mean, today... I'm nervous. I'm nervous every time I get up here, so I mean, don't worry about being nervous. But you guys do look sharp, and I'm really proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jeff Forbes, Board of Supervisor staff, and I serve as a staff for the Youth Commission. In addition to all the projects that were happening over the summer, the Youth Commission sponsored a trip for all the school sites to the McDermott Fieldhouse in Lindsay. So, we brought all the kids together, and we had them interacting, and we broke them up into different groups, got them out of their comfort zone. So, we have one last video going over the day that they did at McDermott in early August.
At the end of the summer, all five high schools participating in the Step Up Service Learning Grant Program attended a day of fun and team-building activities at the McDermott Fieldhouse in Lindsay. Students were put into teams and competed against each other while bonding as a whole throughout the day. The day proved to be a success when all students bonded, giving them a chance to get to know about each other and the work they completed over the summer.
Well, in the morning, we started off as, we sat in here and talked for a while. We got the rules about the McDermott, and after that, we went to play with some wooden things and went to rock climbing, which was difficult for me. Well, for the people, they had fun, and people that made it really high. And we ate lunch, ate pizza, which was actually good. And after that, we went to laser tag, and that was a blast. Everybody had fun. And we just wrapped our day up and had an end of the talk, and everybody had a good time, and got to meet new people, and yeah.
Hi, my name is Daya.
I'm Lucy.
I'm Chaka.
Gloria.
I'm Joanna.
Sandra.
I'm Alda.
I'm Brian.
I go to Orocy High School.
Orocy High School.
Orocy High School.
Orocy High School.
Tulare Union.
La Sierra Military Academy.
Tulare Western High School.
And we are here at the McDermott House.
As a part of the Step Up program.
I created kids books for second graders.
I rebuilt and fixed computers.
I've been painting a mural.
I'm author of a book.
The Step Up program has taught me two things: how to be responsible and make sure you get to your job or your work field on time, and how to care for things and other people, to respect our community.
Respect, responsibility, and taking care of the community.
Teamwork, and about our painting skills.
How to be patient, and how to be responsible, how to be on time, how to get along with other people, and just be part of something.
Without this program, I'll be home watching TV.
I'll probably be at home being lazy.
Without the program, I'd probably be home doing nothing.
So, thank Step Up for all you've done.
So, thank Step Up for everything you've done.
So, thanks for everything you've done.
So, thanks Step Up for everything you've done.
The Service Learning Grant Program.
Well, we want to congratulate all the students for participating. What we'd like to do is, we're gonna take a five-minute break and ask all the students and their advisors to step out front with us, where we're going to take a group photo. So, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back in here to continue. One last comment. I think this is probably the best $25,000 this board has ever spent. So, we're gonna take a five-minute break and meet on the steps. So, all the students and advisors, let's meet on the steps for a photo. I saw that. Okay, we're back in session. We'd like to now take up item number forty-seven, which is a recognition of adoption Awareness Month in Tulare County. I'd like to call forward Renee Smiley, and she is.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman Cox, members of the board, Mr. Russo, and Ms. Bales-Lang. I'm actually here to talk about a really, a subject that's real dear to my heart, called Adoption Awareness Month. And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give a short presentation, and then we're gonna have two guest speakers who are adoptive parents come and talk to you, and then we can move on to the adoption proclamation. So, let me start here. I wanted to give you a little bit of background, just some child abuse statistics here in Tulare County. Approximately every month, we have about 500 calls that are made to our child abuse hotline. And of those calls, we assign approximately 300 referrals for child abuse investigations by our line's social workers. Approximately every month, we file 21 new juvenile court petitions. And these would be petitions before the juvenile court to involve families in the court system. Currently, we have about 1,500 children involved in the juvenile court system where they are receiving some kind of court supervision. And for Tulare County, we have about 900 to 1,000 children who are currently placed in out-of-home care, meaning they have been removed from their parents or guardians and are placed in the foster care system. And for Tulare County, I'll tell you, that's a fairly high number considering that we have only a population of about 450,000, I think it is. Moving on to happier things, we have an adoptions unit. It's one very small unit in our Visalia office. And they perform a variety of duties, but needless to say, they have a very hard job. They have some very complex duties. They do a variety of things. They, the most important thing they do is to assess children and assess prospective adoptive parents. And then they play a very important role in matching children to adoptive families forever, for adoptive parents to be their forever parents. They finalize, they do adoption finalizations, and they take adoption relinquishments from people in the community that are desiring to relinquish their children. At this time, I would just like to introduce the adoption folks that are here today because I want to recognize the phenomenal work they do and the volume of work they do to try to find permanency for our children here in Tulare County. So, I'd like to introduce the adoptions manager. We have John Morrow, and if you'd please stand up. We have Kathleen. We have Kathleen. We have Kathleen Trevino, she is the adoption supervisor, Kathleen. And we have three adoption staff with us today, Allison Hendricks, Bob Chavez, and Anita Guerrero. I wanted to recognize this unit because considering the number of children that we have in out-of-home care, this unit has been very powerful in trying to find permanent homes for our children, and you can see our adoption statistics in the last three years. This is a very small group, it's one unit in all the entire county, and they've managed to finalize over 150 adoptions just last fiscal year. So thank you very much, adoptions unit. Currently in the adoption program, we have 198 children waiting for adoption. This is their age breakdown. These are kids that are currently in the adoption unit that the adoption social workers are trying to find homes for and are matching children for their forever homes. The ethnicity breakdown of these kids is pretty much matched the demographics of Tulare County, with most of the children being Latino that are waiting for adoption, and then, secondly, Caucasian, with about 12 being African-American. And in terms of gender, we almost have a 50-50% breakdown. It's, I think, approximately 55% boys and 45% girls waiting for adoption. That's the good news for November Adoption Awareness Month. But one of the things I wanted to talk about is just where we need your help. We have taken all of the children that are in long-term foster care here in Tulare County, and we have divided it by supervisor district, so that you can see the number of children that we have that are not in permanent homes. These are kids that are in long-term foster care. They're not in the permanent home of adoption or guardianship. They're just languaging in the foster care system. And one of the problems that we're experiencing here in Tulare County is a lack of licensed foster parents, lack of county licensed foster parents. And to me, all those numbers that you see up there are children who could be adopted. Every child is adoptable, as far as I'm concerned, and I just wish that we had permanent homes for these kids. John Morrow is here, and he's going to give you your statistics. We've tried to break down some other statistics for each of your districts in terms of ethnicity and gender, and it's just for your information and your knowledge. And along with him passing out that information is, I wanted you to just take a look at the ties that the executive management for the Health and Human Services Agency is wearing. Would you guys stand up? These are, I don't know if you can see them, but these are ties from Save the Children, and they are ties with children on them, that our children have different ethnicities. And I asked them to wear them today because we got one for each of you, and we're hoping that you will wear these when you're out in the community. We hope that people will ask you about these ties, and we hope that this will give you an opportunity to talk about the children in your district that need a permanent home. And so I just wanted to give you that and just thank you for supporting the adoption unit here in Tulare County. And having said that, you know, I made a very big mistake. I should have introduced one other member in the audience, and I completely just passed it by. And I did want to just recognize Commissioner Charlotte Whittig. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I get so focused on kids that I just forget what I'm doing. But I did want to just share with you her partnership with us. She hears all of our adoption cases and carries very much about the permanency of our children and supports our adoption unit. So thank you, Commissioner. All right, at this time, John, could you come up and introduce your two adoptive parents?
Good morning, Board. I would like to first introduce Kim Coburn and her two daughters, Carly and Delaney. And you may have heard Delaney rehearsing her speech in the back. She's being carried up by Kim. Oh, she's asleep, all right. Kim's husband, Gary, wasn't able to be here. He intended to, but he had family obligations. I would just like to invite Kim to tell you of her adoption experience. Again, Kim Coburn.
Yes, I'm short. Good morning, my name is Kim, obviously like John said. And my husband Gary and I have been married almost 12 years, and after three years of infertility treatments, we decided to pursue adoption, that being the Foster Adopt Program. And a little over seven years ago, we began that roller coaster of a journey, and it has been a blessing to our family. Any child that has been in our house, whether a day, a week, or 18 months, they have been loved and cared for. And we got our first call for a little five-week-old little boy, and I can remember standing in my hallway of my house, and we said yes. And not knowing what the outcome would be, 18 months later, he became a permanent member of our family. And since then, we have finalized two adoptions, two more adoptions, my son Austin, who is six, and Carly, who is four. And hopefully by the end of the year, we will finalize Delaney's adoption, and she will be number four. And the only thing, overall, our journey has been great. Just the ups and downs of the system itself, you know, we have no control over. But working with all the social services, Kathleen in specific, and everybody has just been wonderful. They try to make it as easy as possible. My only recommendation is, and it goes along with seeing these numbers, is I feel like we just need more public awareness of that there is a need for foster homes and adoptive homes. There's, you know, kids from zero to teenagers, and they all deserve a forever home. But with that need of public awareness, also needs to have the support staff in the adoptions unit so they can facilitate these home studies and these adoptions. So thank you for recognizing Adoption Awareness Month, and I appreciate the work that you do.
Next, I'd like to invite Michelle and Rob Kennedy. Michelle and Rob have been licensed foster parents in Tulare County since 2005. This is a blended family with birth children, adopted children, and legal guardianship children. The family's children age range in age from 20 years to two years. Again, I'd like to introduce to you Michelle and Rob Kennedy.
Good morning. We live in Dinuba, so I know Worthley very well. We are on the Gridiron Club together.
That's right.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Worthley, you call out one of our oldest sons' names very often for the high school games.
Yeah, thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Like you said, we've been doing this for many years, and we've had actually over 50 children in our home in the past several years. And we've adopted two, and a week from Saturday will be our third. So we actually get to adopt on National Adoption Day, which is a first for us. So we'll have a total of eight children, so that's wonderful for us. Our experience has been great. It's been very fulfilling. Like Kelly said, we've had them for 20 minutes, and we've had them for years. Our son, Henry, we've had since he was 12 years old. And he is a senior in Dinubahai, he's 18 years old. And, you know, it's watching him grow into a young man. We have younger children, nine, six, and Nathan just turned two, and that's our last one. He will be on the 21st. So I can't agree more with the sentiment that Kelly said about the adoptions unit needs all the support that this county can muster. There are so many children in need in this county, and it's a must. They need as many support staff as they can, and as much support as you can give them, so, you know.
Normally, I'm the one that does the talking, as you can tell. He had to take over today, but there's something I do really want to say. This has been a very, very much a labor of love, work, not only for us, but our community. We have a church family, we have medical staff that are friends and work with us. Our children would come in sick, very rarely are they at the peak of health. They would step up and help in any way. Our services that were given to our children would even come to our home. I understand that the state, that our state is in. I understand that our country is in financial hardship, if you want to say, and each one of us has probably felt it, some of us more than others. But we need those people, including ourselves. When we went home with those tragedies, we had a home. We had a family, many of us parents, siblings. We could go with those tragedies that would happen, job losses, plant closures, things like that. But these children don't. All they have is us, the adoption unit, the foster care system, and yourselves. On the back of one of the ties, a little 12-year-old girl said it better than any of us. If we all worked together. And I think that's all that needs to be said. Thank you. At this time, if we could get the adoptions unit and the adoptive parents to come back up for a photo op with Chairman Cox.
This almost seems like, it's trivial now. Having listened to the stories, I know while you're making your way here, my wife and I had adoptive, had children in our home for a few years, and we adopted two of the little girls that we had in our home, and it is a wonderful experience. And my wife and I are getting older now, and she mentioned the other night, she goes, "You know what, when I feel better next year, I think we ought to start taking in children again." And I said, "You know, anything but teenage girls." I said, "I can handle anything but another teenage girl," so. We want to thank you for what you do. We know it's a difficult job, and these children do deserve a home. And so thank you for providing those homes, and thank you for helping to find and qualify those homes. And Commissioner Whittig, thank you. I know you've been a champion of this for many, many years that I've known you. So I would like to present this proclamation to you, proclaiming November 2009 as Adoption Awareness Month. And if you guys want to come up here, we'd love to take a picture with you. And I was serious, anything but teenage daughter. We're now going to move to our consent calendar. The consent calendar, we'd like to announce it after item 42. The board will adjourn as Tulare County Development Agency, and will reconvene as Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar board? Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent calendar item?
Chairman, if not, I would move to approve consent calendar items 15 through 46.
Second. Motion by Vanderpoel, second by Innis. Or, I'm sorry, motion by Worthley, second by Innis. I have stereo going off in my ears here. It's unanimous. We'll now move to our first timed item, our public hearing, which is item number four, request from our fire department to approve fire hazard abatement cost recovery.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Delman, and I'm a fire inspector for Tulare County Fire. Tulare County Fire Department is requesting the board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the Office of the County Recorder as a lien. We would like to ask that case number 0908-078 for $501 and case number 08, oh, excuse me, 09-08-058 for $481 be removed from the agenda at this time. Tulare County Fire Department has been notified that these properties are bank-owned. The contractor's cost plus administrative fees came to a total of $5,747 for the cleanup of seven parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such costs on the county tax roll as a special assessment. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with exhibit A, the parcel analysis. The contractor's cost comes to a total of $3,920. The administrative fees come to $1,827. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions? Glad to see no grand view properties. We will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, the fire payment, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Innis, second by Ashida. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Two.
Okay, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is item number five. I see Mr. Fussell stepping forward. First item is to request from RMA to terminate resolution of necessity for one immunitarian. Mr. Fussell.
Good morning, Board. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And the first of several hearing items regarding resolutions of necessity this morning is with Mr. Farid Safia. This item was before you on October 21st and then October 27th, and continued to today's meeting. And it's for property known as 017183003, located on the east side of Route 80, Alta Avenue in the city of Dinuba between Kern and Q Streets. And again, as the chair indicated, we're requesting that at this time that the resolution of necessity proceedings be terminated and that staff be directed to continue to negotiate with Mr. Safia to acquire the right of way necessary, leaving him remainder of the parcel for future development. This is a sketch of what was presented to the board back in October when we started the resolution of necessity process, and you can see that Q Street was turned up through the center of the parcel, going through an existing house and an existing store. Mr. Safia spoke at the hearing and said he expressed an interest to keep the house. We visited the site, and we discovered that the house had recently burned, so we were curious as to, you know, why he wanted to keep the house since it was burned. In discussions with the city of Dinuba, we determined that the property is owned commercial, and because the city found that the house was 100% destroyed, the house would not be able to be replaced on the property. In further discussions with Mr. Safia, we identified that his desire really is to keep the property and be able to rebuild his store on the site. We've discussed that with the city of Dinuba, and they are supportive of him taking that approach. So what our proposal to do now is to take Q Street and continue it on its northwesterly alignment and turn it into a 90-degree intersection at Alta Avenue, similar to what is being done with Tulare Street to the north. And the right of way that we would need for the project then would be this red-hatched area, leaving Mr. Safia approximately 11,000 square feet that he could then develop with a store, probably placing it back in this area, and the parking out in front. We have re-engaged our appraiser in reappraising the property with this approach and are working on this to give us an expeditious turnaround to see if we can negotiate a settlement upon this design. And with that, I would respond to any questions.
Can you leave that picture up?
Sorry?
A quick question I had.
Yes.
Just to the, I guess, the southeast where the, it looks like a new curb line, or yes, in there.
Yes.
When I first saw it yesterday, I thought, "Well, that's going to be the new parking lot." Is that the intent, to have that be become a part of that parcel as well?
That's going to be a determination of the city of Dinuba because that is Dinuba right of way, and they would need to vacate that. I understand, if I can get my pointer to work.
Is that going to push us beyond our timeline to have possession of the property we need? we need?
I don't think so. I think we can work within the time that we have left, although we do have to work expeditiously. In talking with the city of Dinuba, they do have a major storm trunk line that needs to go down Kern Street and connect into the Dinuba Town Dench that we're in the process of relocating. So, the location and what's happening here is still being a subject of discussion as to whether or not they could, the curb could follow this alignment and connect to this existing alley, or if they need more right-of-way through this area, or other alternatives that the storm drain line could be built and still accommodate possible additional development area by Mr. Safia. But we're well aware of our timeframes.
Just a moment, it doesn't push us beyond our timeframe.
That's, we're aggressively pursuing it not to do that.
Any other questions, the board?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is still open. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item can come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for final action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval.
Second.
Moved by Worley, second by Ennis. Staff recommendation of approval. Mr. Fussell.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, our next hearing, item number six, and at this time, the next public hearings are, do we have any of these next ones, Brett, that we need to go to close session before we do this?
No, not on these three.
Okay.
The next series of public hearings are for the Road 80 Widening Project. These are hearings that were pulled from your October 21st agenda as a result of some noticing issues and rescheduled for this morning.
So, six, seven, and eight, will we have, follow the same format?
Yes.
One presentation as far as the project, or have we already done that?
No, unfortunately, I will still need to make that presentation, because if the Vanderhams were not present during that, I want to make sure that that information is covered.
Right.
But I will be making one presentation globally on the project, and then an individual presentation on each of the three affected properties. The request this morning is for the Board of Supervisors to conduct hearings regarding the adoption of resolutions of necessity for the Road 80 Widening Project. The board must make several findings. The first is that the public interest and necessity require the project, that the project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and that an offer required by section 7267.2A of the Government Code, together with the accompanying statement of and summary of the basis of the amount established, as just compensation was made to the owner or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with the requirements of said Government Code section. The Road 80 Widening Project is to widen Road 80 from two to four lanes with a dividing center median from Goshen Avenue in the city of Visalia to El Monte Way or Avenue 416 in the city of Dinuba, a distance of approximately 14 miles. The current right-of-way is 80 feet, and the proposed right-of-way will vary from 120 to 140 feet. The project purposes include improving the flow of traffic, increasing the safety within the corridor, improving drainage and alleviating flooding, and improve access to the city of Dinuba. Vicinity map, some past history. Your board adopted a mitigated negative declaration environmental assessment pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act on August 22nd of 2006. And then, subsequent to that, the Federal Highway Administration approved a finding of no significant impact or a fonzie pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act on October 5th of 2006. The California Transportation Commission allocated funding to prepare plans, specs, and estimate, and to acquire right-of-way in December of 2006. And the CTC allocated funding for construction of Phase 1, which was from Goshen Avenue in the city of Visalia to Avenue 328, which is south of the Visalia landfill, in June of 2008. That Phase 1 construction is now complete. You approved a notice of completion at your last meeting. Some pending project approvals that we're working towards exercising. Proposition 1B, state local partnership program. Funding is programmed in the 2009-10 fiscal year for what we're calling Phase 1A. And Phase 1A is from Avenue 328 to the Avenue 342 alignment, which is approximately 1.5 miles in length, and it also will include the structures crossing Harrell Number 2 Ditch, St. John's River, Elbow Creek, Cottonwood Creek, Cottonwood Creek Overflow, and the Wilson Ditch. The public necessity for the project includes alleviating congestion and improving the level of service. Traffic volumes are to reach 30,000 vehicles per year in 2028, and this is more than double the current volume on the roadway. This is a table that shows the existing level of service and projected level of service at the various intersections along the project corridor. You can see existing levels of service range anywhere from C's to level of service F, and that without the project, all of the intersection would be operating at level of service F. And with the project, the intersections in 2028 will be operating at acceptable levels of service C and D. With level of service F, you are creating congestion, undue delay, and you are negatively affecting the air quality. With the project, in improving the level of service to the acceptable levels of service C and D, you minimize the delay, and you positively affect air quality. In the area of safety, the Avenue 304 and Avenue 328 intersections have collisions rates higher than the statewide average, on the order of 1.2 to 8.5 times higher respectively. Two travel lanes in each direction allow vehicles that operate at different speeds to pass each other without having to enter the lanes of opposing traffic. The median provides an additional distance and physical barrier between opposing traffic. The median has opportunity to provide for left turns without affecting through traffic. We have left turn pockets at the major intersections, as well as median breaks to allow for U-turn movements. The median allows smaller vehicles crossing Road 80 to be able to make that movement in two phases, rather than trying to cross all four lanes of traffic at one time. In addition, the project is providing a clear recovery area of 20 feet from the edge of pavement, edge, excuse me, edge of outside lane to any obstruction such as utility poles, stand pipes, et cetera. In the drainage and flooding area, we have a flooding problem at the intersection of Road 80 and Avenue 360. The project will replace a culvert under Avenue 360 east of Road 80 to allow the water to flow southward to the, into the existing ditch system. In addition, in some areas, we're raising the road elevation to avoid the flooding of Road 80, so it's, in those major events, the road's not shut down due to flooding. Regarding access to the city of Dinuba, Dinuba is the only city in the county without direct access to a state highway. They have encouraged, through their economic development program, the establishment of packing sheds, food processing plants, big box retail stores, which have resulted in increased truck traffic into and out of the city. In addition, Road 80 is the only regional north-south link between Visalia and Dinuba, which then allows a connection to state routes 198 and then to 99 into Southern California. And that heavy truck traffic on Road 80 impairs speeds along the uncontrolled segments. This is a, an overview of the project, showing the, how the alignment varies as it moves through the project area. Working from south to north, the project alignment is centered on the existing right-of-way improvements between Avenue 416 and Avenue 402 alignment, and this allows the project to accommodate development patterns that have occurred over time in Dinuba. From the Avenue 402 alignment, south to the Avenue 388 alignment, the project widens to the east, gives us some ability to utilize some existing lanes for southbound traffic, and also avoids some historic palm trees and irrigation facilities. One of the things of the, the way the land lays in the valley is it slopes from east to west, and so irrigation structures are on the west side of the highway, pumping up and into the fields to gravity across the field in a westerly direction. By moving the alignment to the east, we're able to avoid the relocation of those facilities. From Avenue 388 to the Avenue 374 alignment, the road then shifts to the west, and this is an area where there's the S-curve at Avenue 384, and we'll be lengthening that S-curve in order to accommodate the higher speeds that are capable on a four-lane roadway. We're also missing an existing commercial structure at the intersection of 80 and 384. From the Avenue 374 alignment, south to the Avenue 335 alignment, we move back to the east. We're also making use of existing bridges and structures. Again, as I mentioned earlier, allows us to minimize impact to irrigation facilities along the corridor. From 335 alignment, south to Avenue 328, we move to the west. This allows us to go around the existing sanitary landfill, the Visalia landfill, and existing lanes being utilized for northbound traffic. From 328 to Avenue 314, we widen back to the east, and again, we're minimizing the impact to the irrigation facilities that are on the west side of the road. And then, from 314 down to 304, we become centered on the existing right-of-way improvements, which accommodates the historic development in the city of Visalia. With that, I would respond to any questions that the board may have before I move into the first project property, affected property.
Questions?
Thank you.
No questions, Mr. Fussell?
Okay. The first item on your agenda this morning is item number six, is Ronald Vanderham and Cheryl Lee Vanderham, and the affected property is commonly referred to as APN 047010042. And the property is located along the west side of Road 80, south of Avenue, I can't even read that. Three, man, eyes are bad. 384, excuse me, midway between 384 and 368, excuse me on that. The right-of-way required is generally 40 feet in width, and it's slightly more than 381 feet long. And then, there's 15 feet of right-of-way that's needed along the north side of Avenue 376 for approximately 141 feet. And in addition to the right-of-way that's necessary, which would be acquired in fee title, there's also a need for a 10-foot temporary construction easement along the right-of-way. And the more specific descriptions of the right-of-way and the TCEs are identified in Appendix A in the resolution. And then, there's some impact drawings, so you can see the impact of the project, and the right-of-way necessary is this right here, and then this piece that's on Avenue. And the TCE is behind it right here. As far as the findings that need to be made by the board, the offer package was made to the Vanderhams on March 3rd of 2008, and the offer package did meet the requirements of Government Code Section 7267.2A, in that it was not less than the county's appraised value of the property, and is believed to be just compensation for the property and the interest to be acquired. The notice of this hearing was sent to the Vanderhams on October 1st, 2009, pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure 1245.235, and that, that notice was mailed to the address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. In addition, we hand-delivered the notice to Mr. Vanderham on October 26th, 2009. Staff's recommendation is to conduct a hearing regarding the adoption of this resolution of necessity for Ronald Vanderham and Cheryl Lee Vanderham, and then, based upon the evidence that been presented in writing in the staff reports, as well as orally during this presentation, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the necessary findings as identified on the screen and in the agenda item in resolution. In addition, part of the action would be to direct county council to file this action with the courts. With that, I'd respond to any questions that the board may have.
Questions on this item, Board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Those wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And you can use either podium, and that one there, little button on the right side will make it go up.
Good morning. My name is Ronald Vanderham, 8150 Avenue 360 Visalia. October 21st, I was at this meeting in regards to my properties, and this specific property, Robert Newby, offered to trade me that piece of land with a lot that a house was removed. And I'm awaiting his answer for that trade in property.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Mr. Vanderham, do you have any issues with the resolution of necessity as far as the necessity for this project and your property?
Not on, not on this piece of property.
Thank you.
But I am awaiting what, I will have an issue if I can't swap that little parcel, because it squares up that piece of property.
You will have your answer today. Brett, Mr. Fussell?
Mr. Cypress is shaking his head, "Yes."
Okay, you'll have your answer today. Anybody else wishing to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Chairman, I would move approval.
Moved by Worley.
Second.
Second by Ennis. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, resolution of necessity, is for Robert W. Vanderham, and all of the information that I presented in the previous presentation regarding the general discussion of the project and the purpose and need is to be included as part of the record for this resolution of necessity hearing. The parcels affected are commonly referred to as Assessor's Parcel Numbers 047060018 and 047060019, and they are located on the west side of Road 80, northwest corner of Right-of-way is generally 40 feet in width and slightly longer than 2,330 feet. In addition, there's a need for 15 feet along the south side of Avenue 376 for 141 feet, and five feet along the north side of Avenue 368 for approximately 120 feet. And then, parallel, adjacent to the right-of-way acquisition, is a need for a 10-foot temporary construction easement. And again, the legal descriptions and Platts, more specifically detailing this acquisition, are attached to the resolution of necessity as Appendix A. And then, there are some impact drawings that show what's going on. You can see in this particular area, south of the button ditch number two, the road is to the east. We begin then to, to widen the road in the westerly direction. Oops, I went in the wrong direction. And Avenue 376 alignment, right-of-way take here. TCE is required along the west side of the road. This is actually south of button ditch number two. The offer package required by Government Code Section 7267.2A was made to Robert W. Vanderham on March 3rd of 2008, and that that package did this of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property, and believed to be the just compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. Notice of the hearing was sent to Mr. Vanderham on October 1st, 2009, pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure 1245.235, and the notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. In addition, the notice was hand-delivered to Mr. Vanderham on October 26th, 2009. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors conduct, conduct this hearing regarding the adoption of resolution of necessity, and based on the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four findings required by law that are on the screen and in your resolution. And in addition, you would be directing county council to file the paperwork with the court. And with that, staff would respond to any questions that board may have.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Those wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward. Again, I'm sorry, you have to state your name and address for the record. It's being required.
My name is Ronald Vanderham, 8150 Avenue 360. I currently own this property, not Robert Vanderham. I currently own this property, not Robert Vanderham, and I did receive an offer on the twenty-sixth of October. I'd like to extend my comments to the next piece of land if I could.
And you have no objection with the necessity?
I do have objection because this land is tied to wastewater issues with the state of California.
On this, on this one that we're hearing now?
Yes, yes.
Is there a reason why you want to wait until the next one, then?
Because it's all tied together.
All tied together, okay.
You want me to make my spill? I will. I would like to make it clear, I am not here protesting the widening of Road eighty. I would like the record to reflect that I attempted repeatedly to negotiate a fair and equitable settlement with the county regarding my property loss. The county, either through its representatives or the county officials themselves, have failed to follow through with answers after the limited times they have agreed to meet. I have offered to meet and discuss with the county the significance of the Water Resource Board management issues that impact my livelihood and facility values that will be impacted by loss of land. The loss of land affects my business facility and my ability to maintain current permit status. So much time has been wasted by the county or its representatives by miscommunication, cloudy answers, and unanswered questions. It is frustrating, as a property owner seeking just relief or loss, that the county repeatedly failed to competently answer all questions directly. I believe that all such issues must be addressed. And I would also like to point out in the public hearing under D, it says here the offer required by Section seven-two-six-seven-dash-two, that the Government Code has a requirement of establishing just compensation to the owner. And the only complaint I have with this and the next piece of property that's going to be confronted with you gentlemen is the fact that we have not resolved the wastewater issue with state of California. This is a legal issue that we're dealing with. And as Mr. Vanderpool knows, this is a serious thing in the dairy industry as in the last ten years. Thank you.
Any other wishing to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I do just want to make one comment. Mr. Vanderham and I, I've expressed this sentiment to you and also to the other dairy owners along the Road eighty stretch. And the real concern there is that, you know, we've got the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District to agree that they will not hold harmful the property owners for land loss due to eminent domain action. We have not gotten the same agreement from the Regional Water Quality Board. And until we can get that, there's really going to be no resolution. However, on the flip side, we're sitting here today, and we know that if we do not move forward with this project, we will lose our funding. So it's a very difficult position to be in, and I don't foresee the Water Quality Board being in a position to be able to reach any agreement, as they have not even adopted their general order to this point. So I am sorry, and I wish that there was something we could do from where we're sitting today, but there really isn't. And I think you realize, we're not setting a price today. You're aware.
I'm not asking for a price. The finding today is to authorize legal action. And the government under section, or the D here, says that I supposed to be offered something in regards to what the value of wastewater is, and I haven't been offered that yet. So I don't know how you can start a legal action. My neighbors have been here the last two months with this same issue, and they have been served a lawsuit by the county on this issue without answering the issue of wastewater. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Vanderham sits down, could we get a formal stipulation from him that he also wishes his comments to apply to item eight when that matter comes forward, so that he doesn't have to get back up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted one brief comment to appreciate the comments of Mr. Vanderpool. But I do know that there are continuing discussions with the Water Quality Regional Board, and I don't know if Brett's going to respond to that or not, but we've made additional efforts to try to get some resolutions matter from the board, and maybe make some progress, I'm not sure. But the other thing is that as we move forward, this issue will be resolved, one way or another, either because the Air Board or Water Board will grant some sort of immunity, or some compensable amount will be awarded on the basis of the value of that potentiality. So again, the necessity of this project moving forward, I believe there's maybe a little confusion about the legal requirements of what are needed in terms of a good faith effort to pay for a fair market value. We have appraisals that have been done, those are the offers that have been made, and we can all disagree with the values that are associated with those. That's not the purpose of the hearing today. It's solely for the purpose of whether or not this project needs to move forward. And certainly, I think we all have agreed that it does need to move forward.
Mr. Chair, if I might comment as well?
Yes.
Supervisor Worthley is correct. We are continuing to work with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We're actually at staff level beginning to sense some movement on their part to be able to respond to us in a manner that we might be able to use and go forward with the dairy owners, because the issue is the unknowns that are out there. And if we can't quantify it, then we can't put a number on it, you know, to make an offer based upon it, if it indeed is an issue that needs to be compensated. So we are making, we believe we're making progress in that area. The other comment I would like to make that I apologize for not putting in the record earlier is that even though we are here today asking the board to adopt resolutions of necessity on these projects, we still want to continue to negotiate with all of these property owners right up until the time when the jury makes a final decision on compensation. So, I mean, obviously, our objective is not to spend a lot of time and resources on legal costs. We'd much rather spend time delivering the project. But as Supervisor Worthley said, we have some schedules that we need to meet, and we need to keep this project moving.
Mrs. Chair, I do have one question for staff. Brett, do we have any ideas to a timeline that we can expect some sort of resolution with the Regional Water Quality Board? I know that that's kind of having you throwing darts at a no target, but do you have any idea?
We're ready to submit something formal on our analysis to the Regional Board on the effects on the dairies probably as soon as late this week.
Okay.
We are in the process of reviewing a draft of our report that we prepared. You know, once it gets in their hands, then you're subject of, you know, the state staff getting it turned around. But I believe there is a commitment from the staff that we've spoken with to turn it around quickly, whatever "quickly" means. So I would like to think by the end of November, we probably would have an answer as to where we're going to be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go ahead. We haven't called for a vote yet, Mr. Vanderham.
I'll speak for myself, but my neighbors feel the same way. None of us want attorneys involved. They cost a lot of money. We don't have time to deal with these kind of issues. We would like to deal with them one-on-one and answer these and resolve them without going to attorneys. But once you have filed suit against the neighbors, which in two weeks I'm going to be served, no doubt, if this is authorized today, that we have to hire an attorney and start spending money. I don't appreciate that issue, and I don't want to spend time going to court.
As we do not either. We'll bring it back to the board then.
Chairman, I would move approval on this matter.
Moved by Worthley.
Second.
Second by Ashida. Mr. Fussell, I'm number eight.
Yes.
One comment before we begin. We have offered and have worked out with some property owners the matter of possession, right of possession. And in so doing, that does put off the necessity of filing a complaint, does it not?
Have attempted to. I do not know if we have been successful.
Well, let me answer the question about if they were to agree to that. Then again, the idea is that they agree to give us the right of possession, putting off the issue of valuation of the property until later date. Does that put off the need to file a lawsuit?
It would, yes.
Well, I think, I think it might be well to, I think Mr. Vanderham's comments are quite understandable from his perspective of having to incur legal fees. But an offer has been made, and I think it would be good to reiterate that offer to them, that they could give us the right of possession. Still leaves aside the valuation of what is the value of the take, but it would put off the necessity of filing a lawsuit imminently.
I'd have to ask Mr. Fussell if we've been successful with any of those attempts.
We have, the first round of resolutions of necessity we went through were three dairies on what we call Phase One A. And shortly following up that meeting, we did present to each one of those dairies an agreement for right of possession. Again, there's legal language in there that protects both sides as far as continuing to negotiate and to get to a legal solution, if that's what we need. Those were rejected by those three property owners.
Okay, continue.
Yes. Item number eight on your agenda is another resolution of necessity for the Vanderham Dairy. The affected property is commonly referred to as Assessor's Parcel Numbers zero-four-eight, zero-one-zero-zero-two-four, zero-four-eight, zero-one-zero-zero-two-five, and zero-four-seven-zero-six-zero-zero-one-five. And the property is located on the east side of Road eighty, north of Avenue three-sixty. And it's actually, there's another, of the three parcels, one parcel was split by land under different ownership. The right-of-way that's required is generally forty-six feet in width by about a mile in length between three-sixty and three-sixty-eight, and then a triangular-shaped parcel, forty-seven feet at the base. That's another twelve-hundred-and-twenty feet in length. And this parcel lies about a half-mile north of the first referenced parcel. In addition to the need for right-of-way to construct, the widening of Road eighty, there's a need for a ten-foot temporary construction easement. And the property necessary for the right-of-way would be acquired in fee, and the TCE would be an easement that would evaporate after the project is over. These are more specifically described in Exhibit A attached to the resolution. And then here are the impact maps. This is the triangular-shaped parcel that is to the north. And then this is the property that is, the forty-six feet that is to the south. Again, the offer package that's required by Government Code Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A was made to the Vanderham Dairy on March third of two thousand eight. And again, that offer package consisted of not less than the county's appraised value of the property, and at the time was believed to be the just compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. The notice of the hearing on the resolution of necessity was sent to the Vanderham Dairy on October first, two thousand nine pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure, Section one-two-four-five-dot-two-three-five. And that was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. And then in addition, the notice was hand-delivered to Mr. Vanderham on October twenty-sixth, two thousand nine. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors conduct the hearing regarding the adoption of resolution of necessity, and then based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity and making the following findings, which are identified on the screen, consistent with the requirements for resolution of necessity. I would also like to add at this time that all of the information that I proceeded at the very beginning of the Road eighty eminent domain hearings regarding the general aspects of the project be incorporated into this record. And with that, staff would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions on this property, Board? Seeing none, we'll bring it to the public for a public hearing. Those wishing to address the board, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Ron Vanderham, eighty-one-five-zero, Avenue three-sixty. Council suggested that I don't have to make any more comments. I already made enough. Thank you.
Very, very important for us to hear, though. Thank you. Seeing none other, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Move by Worthley.
Second.
Second by Ennis.
I would like, excuse me, if I could add, so it gets into the record that the court reporter is taking, I want to make sure that, because these transcripts are set up separately, that I do incorporate by reference the previous comments of Mr. Vanderham, so they are carried forward into this item.
So noted.
That was the end of the Road eighty resolutions of necessity. The next round is on Road one-oh-eight. And prior to the board beginning series of six hearings, staff would suggest that we go into closed session, because we might be able to drop a few off the list this morning.
Okay, you have items nine through fourteen. We are going to go on to closed session before we hold these public hearings.
Items A through S on your board's closed session agenda.
Okay, we're back in open session. We are going to remove items number ten and eleven. We have reached tentative agreement settlement with property owners. So we will now turn the time back over to you, Mr. Fussell, for nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Thank you, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Shifting gears, shifting ends of the county, shifting projects, we're moving to the Road one-oh-eight widening project. And again, we're here this morning to take hearing, have a hearing on resolutions of necessity. Some of this presentation, you're going to look familiar from the Road eighty presentations because it's the law requirements of the findings that you have to make. The staff this morning is requesting that the board conduct hearings and consider the adoption of resolutions of necessity for the Road one-oh-eight widening project. Board must make the following findings. That the public interest and necessity require the project. That the project is planned and located in a manner that will be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. That the property described is necessary for the project. And that the offer required by Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A of the Government Code, together with the accompanying statement of and summary of the basis of the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with the requirements of said Government Code section. The project is to widen Road one-oh-eight from two to four and six lanes with a dividing center median from Leland Avenue in the city of Tulare to Caldwell Avenue in the city of Visalia, a distance of slightly less than five miles. The current right-of-way along this corridor is eighty feet, and the proposed right-of-way would vary from one-hundred-and-ten feet in the Visalia section to one-hundred-and-forty-six feet in the Tulare section. Purposes include improving traffic flow, increasing safety, improving drainage along the roadway, and improving access between the cities of Visalia and Tulare. And this is a location map showing the project limits. Some recent activities on the project. The Federal Highway Administration approved a categorical exclusion pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act, ORNEPA, on January thirtieth, two thousand seven. Your board adopted a final environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act on February sixth, two thousand seven. In June of two thousand seven, the California Transportation Commission allocated funding to prepare plans, specs, and estimates, and for right-of-way acquisition. Some pending project approvals. The first one is a Proposition One-B State Local Partnership Program funding, which is programmed in the two-thousand-nine-ten fiscal year for construction. This is approximately two-point-five, two-point-six million dollars. This SLPP funding is then matched by funding from Measure R, Proposition One-B discretionary funding that the county receives, and funding from the Tulare County Local Transportation Fund makes up the total funding sources for construction. And the project is planned to be constructed in a single phase. On the public interest and necessity issues, congestion and level service is important. We've identified that traffic volumes are expected to reach twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred vehicles per day in the year twenty-thirty, which is double the current volume on the This is a table that identifies the levels of service at the various intersections along the Road one-oh-eight and the corridor. You can see that in the current year, two-thousand-ten, without the project, we are operating at levels of service ranging from B at Avenue two-fifty-two to level of service F at Avenues two-sixty-four and two-seventy-two. The twenty-thirty future levels of service without the project has this roadway operating at level of service F, with the exception of the intersection of Leland and Road one-oh-eight. And with the project, we are operating at acceptable levels of service ranging from A through- A through D throughout the corridor. And if you're operating at a level of service F, you are creating congestion, undue delay, and you can negatively affect air quality. With the project, for the most part, the corridor would be operating at a level of, acceptable level of service C, which minimizes delay and has a positive effect on air quality. Overall, the accident history within the corridor is below the statewide average. However, there was one fatal accident at the Avenue 264 intersection, which drives in the fatal column up above the statewide average. Similar to the other project you're working on, two travel lanes in each direction allows vehicles operating at different speeds to pass each other without having to enter into opposing traffic. Median provides additional distance and physical barrier between opposing traffic. Median allows for the making of left turns without affecting through traffic in the corridor. It allows smaller vehicles that need to cross 108 to make the movement in two phases rather than crossing all of the four lanes of traffic at one time, or two lanes of traffic at one time. Clear recovery area of twenty feet from the edge of the outside lane to any obstructions is also provided with the project, and there is a series of power poles down through the corridor. The build alternative that's, that is being advanced through the plan, specs, and estimate accommodates the existing curb patterns at the urbanized south and north ends of the project in the cities of Tulare and Visalia. The widening south of Cart Mill or Avenue 248 in the city of Tulare is distinguished from the rest of the project in that the city's circulation element calls for the roadway to be six lanes in that area. And then the rest of the widening to four lanes between 248 and 280 will shift from the, from being easterly side of the existing alignment to the westerly side of the existing alignment to being centered on the alignment in an effort as we thread the, the future improvements or the new improvements through the existing structures and try to avoid existing houses, existing buildings, and all other sensitive improvements. Breakdown by segment. In the Leland Avenue to Cart Mill Avenue or Avenue 248, it's, again, it's centered on the existing alignment. This is a segment that's widened to six lanes, and it recognizes and accommodates development that's occurred over time in Tulare. The next segment is from Avenue 248 to Avenue 256. That's where the four-lane section begins. In this particular area, the widening transitions to the east, and as a result, we're able to minimize the impact to an existing dairy and residences. However, we do impact one residence in this segment. From 264, I'm sorry, 256 to Avenue 264, we are back centered on the existing alignment, again minimizing impacts to existing structures. And the one thing we will be doing is constructing a new traffic signal at Avenue 264. From 264 north to what's identified as a North Branch Canal, we begin transitioning the widening to the west, and as a result in this area, we're able to minimize the impacts to a dairy. From the North Branch Canal up to Avenue 272, the road transitions back to the east. And in this particular segment, we are able to avoid the Southern California Edison substation. And if you've been down this road segment, you'll note that at the substation, there are two large steel poles just inside their fence that we are trying to avoid. In addition, we will be constructing a new traffic signal at Avenue 272. And then the last segment of the road is from 272 to 280. The roadway transitions back from the east to the west. We do impact one residence, and again, it accommodates growth and development that's occurred in Visalia. Backing up on the North Branch to Avenue 272, I forgot to note that there are two residences that are impacted on the 108, and those are at the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection of 272 and 108. In addition, there's one more house that is to the east on 272 that's also affected by the widening on 272. With that, staff would respond to any questions on the, the general presentation regarding the 108 widening project.
Questions? Okay, continue, Mr. Fussell.
First item this morning is a resolution of necessity to acquire property from Caterino Lecon and Mary Lecon, and the affected property is commonly referred to as Assessor's Parcel Number 11981005. And it is located on the west side of Road 108, south of Avenue 272. It's actually just south of the Southern California Edison substation. The right-of-way that's required is approximately six feet in width on the north end and nine feet in width on the south end, and about three-hundred-and-eighty-one feet in length. In addition to this segment of right-of-way, there is a need for a ten-foot temporary construction easement, excuse me, and the more precise legal descriptions and plats are included with the resolution as Exhibit, excuse me, Appendix A. And then here is an impact map where you can see the right-of-way that's required is the hatched area through here. The offer package required by Section 7267.2A of the Government Code was made to the Lecons on May 5th, 2009. The offer package consisted, again, of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be the just compensation for the property and all of the interest to be acquired. Notice of this hearing on the resolution of necessity was sent to the property owner on October 22nd, 2009 pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1245.235. And that notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff is recommending this morning that you conduct a hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution of necessity, and based upon the presentation in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four findings required by state law for resolution of necessity, and also directing county council to file the necessary paperwork with the courts. And with that, staff would respond to any questions regarding this particular property.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this issue, please step forward and state your name and address for the, for the record.
My name is Helen Lecon, and we own the property at 27115 Road 108. I know that eventually the property will be taken, but we do object to the taking of the property mostly, because I feel that we purchased the property because of the aesthetics of the front area that they're going, going to be taking a part of it. This is going to affect the looks of the property. It is going to affect the safety, because they, we will be much closer to the road, and the noise also will be part of what we did not want. We have tried to work with the representatives that were trying to acquire the property, and we don't feel that they have given us the amount, or the, the amount that was given, that was offered does not cover the replacement of the things that we needed to the, the fence and everything else. But we also have another safety issue that we, my son has a forty-foot trailer plus, and the way the, the safety is now, we can come into the property, the driveway is long enough to stop and open the gate and get into the property. When part of that frontage is taken, there is no way that we can come into it, because there will be a divider strip in the middle of the road, so you cannot go into the house coming in from the south side. We will have to come around from the Edison. The area that we'll have to come into is very, it's, you just can't make it in with, with that trailer unless you widen the approach and put an automatic gate opener. And when we mentioned that to them, we did not get a response or anything on that. There's no way, we either need another opening or widen the opening that we now have. Also, when we talked to them about, there's several trees that will be, have, that they will take out, and they're telling us that we can't replace any of those trees, they can't pay us for them. But it does make a big difference on the looks of the property. The noise volume will be higher. But mostly, I think that the issue of the safety is, is very important right there. Otherwise, we would not, we'd have to just get rid of the trailer. We can't get in there with that. I do know that we've sat in front of the property at the regular rush hour, which would be about five o'clock, and we don't feel that there's enough traffic that goes by there. It's not congested. I know they're going around the Edison, and we're right next to the Edison property, but yet they're taking our property. I don't, I can't understand. I know that, you know, that's a, a larger firm that's going to be more costly, but still, they should take in. The amount that we asked for is not out of line, and we have estimates to back all of it up. But when we talked to the, your representatives, they said that it's going to be taken anyway, that, and then they'll negotiate later, but we just didn't feel that they were trying to work with us and get, and, and give us the amount. We do have counsel. We don't, we're like, I'm like the other person, we, we just feel that just compensation for the aesthetics, the safety, the noise, that we will have to give up, is just not, we're not being compensated for it. They, I don't feel that the, we were, they were trying to work with us, because first they told us to get the estimates that we needed for all these things, and we got, gave them the estimates, and then they were just ignored. So we bought the property recently. I know that this is a very minor issue in comparison to some of the other water issues and dairy permits and so forth, but it is our land, and it is important to our family. And we just would like for them to at least work with us, because I would just prefer that they take, go around us like they are the Edison, which is right next to us. Because the, the looks of the property, the, the shortening that is going to make the frontage look very, it's not, just not going to be the same land. So I just don't think that it's, it's, we've been, they're really trying to work with us.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
You know the median's going to go in anyways, correct?
Pardon?
You know the median is going to go in
Yes.
Part of the project anyways.
Uh-huh, and that's the reason we cannot come in from the south side with the trailer. Right now, you can come in from the south side, go into the driveway, stop and open the gate, we've got plenty of driveway area. When they put that median in, we have to come in around the other way from Road 272, come in, and it's such a close area because of the way the entry is, you, it's, I mean, you have to, there's no way, if anyone can go in with that trailer, the truck and trailer, and pull it into that driveway, you're welcome to do it, because it just can't be done. Not the way we are right now. That would cause a safety issue. And when we told them we would need an automatic gate and the widening on it, we didn't get any results. But if we came in from that side and had to stop until someone can open the gate, then that's going to be a safety issue. There will be two lanes, but you cannot make a turn from the inside lane, you would have to make it from the outside lane with that size of trailer.
And you said that there was no compensation being offered for trees that would be lost.
No.
And that is not true. We do compensate for trees that are lost.
Well, they, little saplings is what they told us. I mean, the, when I worked with
There is a financial amount that can be paid for the loss of those trees, so I, I think you've, you might have misunderstood there.
No, he told, he told us we could get, the size that he told us would be little saplings. I mean, they're, they're very small trees. I think the amount was, that was offered was like a hundred dollars or something like that. It was very minor.
There might just be a misunderstanding there.
No.
And then you, has someone explained to you that what we're doing today is not setting a price?
No, but I am just saying that what, the re, I mean, if they can go around us, I would prefer that, because I just, I'm not going over the prices. I'm saying that, that I would be willing to work with them, but we are being affected. The aesthetics of the property, the safety, the noise is, is an issue. And I just don't feel that they're, they're compensating us for that. It's just, not, not a just compensation. So if, if they can go around Edison, then I, we're just right next to them.
Mr. Chairman, may I make an inquiry of Mrs. Lecon for the record? Ma'am, I'm a little confused regarding the discussion about the trailer.
Mm-hmm.
Who does the trailer belong to?
My son, he lives there.
He lives on the property?
He lives on the property, yes.
Okay.
It's not, no, we're not, we're not parking it for him. He lives on that property. We own it, but he's living on it.
I have a question on that point. Is it a tractor trailer?
No, it is a travel trailer.
Travel trailer.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody else would like to address the board on this property? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we do need to have Mr. Fussell step forward and address, if it's possible for him to do so, I don't know how long this has been before RMA, Mrs. Lecon's question about why the project requires going, where it's going instead of around her. And apparently, it's going around Edison, according to her. I don't know if that's true or not.
You'd like to address that?
The project has been designed using the east property line or the west right-of-way line of 108 across the Edison property as sort of the fixed point. But from that point, we, as we move, continue to move south, we need to be moving the roadway to the, back to the west to, you know, miss some other features. So at some point in time, you've got to start shifting, and that shifting begins to occur on Ms. Lecon's property. The other thing I'd like to comment on is that, is there is a median proposed in that area. This is also, is right south of the Avenue 272 intersection for which we're going to be putting in a traffic signal, and we would have a left-turn pocket, which would have to be designed the appropriate length in order, in order to accommodate the traffic. So there's, there's not a lot of flexibility in, in having any median breaks in this segment because of the proximity to the, to the intersection. And again, I would also like to add, and I apologize in the beginning, is that, for not making the statement in the beginning, even though we're here before you today with these resolutions of necessity, this is to keep the project moving to, to meet the timelines of our funding, but we are still willing and wanting to negotiate with property owners to, you know, come to a settlement that we both can agree on prior to ending up in the court's hands.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we adjourn to closed session before your board takes a vote on this matter.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session, and we'll be back shortly.
I'll talk to you.
Okay. Okay, we're back in open session. Mr. Fussell, you have a little clarification to make.
Yes, the, the roadway has been designed, as I indicated in my earlier comments, you know, it moves, shifts from east to west as it goes through the corridor to, you know, try to minimize impacts to existing structures. In this particular section, we've actually already acquired right-of-way to accommodate that alignment that is on the east side of the road. So if we were to make any changes in the design of the road at this time and shift it over, then we would have to, you know, start that process over on that abutting property. So, you know, I think that what we've done is we've done our best job that we possibly could in trying to weave this roadway through there with the minimum amount of impact to all of the properties the best that we could. And again, I would like to restate that we're still willing to continue to negotiate, trying to solve these issues. However, we still would recommend that you adopt the resolution of necessity to keep the project moving forward.
Okay. Bring it back to the board for action. So move. Seconded by Ashida, seconded by Ennis. And is unanimous. And number twelve. Rogers?
Yes. The next item on your agenda is item number twelve. This is a resolution of necessity for James Edward Rogers. The affected property are commonly known as APN numbers 126, 240, 035, and 126.
The affected property are commonly known as APN numbers 126, 240, 035, and 149, 030, 012. And here's a map showing the location of the two properties. One of the, one of the, one of the properties is located south of, well, south of Avenue 272, and the other property is at the southeast corner of 264 and Road 108. The right of way on the east side of 108, south of 272, tapers from 26 feet on the north to zero feet on the south and is approximately 650 feet in length. This is in the area where we begin transitioning back from the east to the west. The right of way at the, on the southeast corner of Road 108 is approximately 18 feet in width and slightly more than 1,320 feet in length. In addition to the right of way that's being acquired for the road widening project, there is a need for a 10-foot temporary construction easement adjacent to that right of way, and the legal descriptions and Platts are more specifically described in Appendix A of the, attached to the resolution of necessity. And here are the impact maps. This is at Avenue 264. The right of way that's basically starts from the southern right of way line of 264 and then runs south, I believe it was approximately a quarter mile, and then the property that's up to the north, you can, you can see the transition of the road that's going on up here where the right of way required tapers as the road shifts from east to west. The offer package required by Section 7267.2A was made to Mr. Rogers on January 20th of 2009 for APN 126, 240, 035, which is the north parcel, and then on July 3rd, 2009, for APN 149, 030, 012, which is the south parcel. And again, the package consisted of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be the just compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. The notice of the hearing for this resolution of necessity was sent to Mr. Rogers on October 22nd, 2009 pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure Section 1245, 235, and it was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff is recommending this morning that you conduct the hearing regarding the adoption of the resolution of necessity, and then based upon the evidence that's been presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four findings required by state law, in addition directing county council to file the necessary paperwork with the courts. And then I would like to add that all of the information relative to the general description of the project that was made at the beginning of the 108 hearings be incorporated into this resolution of necessity by reference. That staff would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions on this property? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
James Rogers. My address is 13802 Avenue 260, Visalia. I own, I'm the trustee for the Rogers Family Trust of this property, southeast corner of Demery and 264 and south of 272 on the east side. I've been in that area for over 50 years, and I've watched the traffic get worse. In my opinion, as, as well as some of the other people out there, the traffic is not that bad. It's the intersections that are bad, and a stoplight at 264, if they would have studied this, would have stopped almost all of the, the accidents there, probably not all of them, but most of them. People get tired of sitting there waiting to go across Demery on 264, and they will just drive out into the front of traffic. For no apparent reason, they'll just drive out. I was at that produce market for 11 years and watched this happen over and over again. And as far as, as the purchase of the property, we're not going to talk about price, but they, they seem to think that there's no value on walnut trees, no value on plum trees, and what I was told was the offer that they, that they gave, out of that offer, I had to remove the trees and dispose of them out of, out of my section of the money. I had to move the fence back at the flower store. I had to take care of all my own underground. I'm not looking for a job. I've got plenty of jobs. It just, it just wouldn't work. The, the traffic would flow smooth with two lanes with, with stoplights that would be synchronized. People would have plenty of time to get across. Once they put that road up and, and put the divider in between, it's going to make it very difficult to farm. You've got to go from 264 to 256 to round and come back to get in the field, a mile. And they said, well, we could put in turns every quarter of a mile, but I, I never see nothing in writing. This, a fellow that came down from San Francisco, he's the one that, that said this, and, and make sure that they make your openings wide enough. Well, I, I don't have the authority to have them make anything. That's why I'm here today to ask you to reconsider this. And it would just make it almost impossible. There's going to be no way to drain that road. They're, they're talking about better drainage. They're going to drain the road into my fields. They're going to drain the road into the neighbor's field. They're not going to drain them into a gutter or a, a storm drain. They're not out there. They won't be out there. They've, they've told me that that land, I, I offered a proposal to the, to the supervisors, and, and I don't know if it was even presented to you, but they said that my land would always be farmland. We don't need a four-lane road through farmland, really don't. I can't remove the trees. I'm not going to, I'm not going to remove the trees. You know, somebody else will have to do that, and it's got to be paid by somebody, not me. The car count, as far as going up as much as it did, that's only speculation. They have no scientific way of actually proving how many cars is going to be on that road in 2050 or whatever. It might be airplanes. The level of service would be helped just by the traffic lights, and that's really about all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Fussell, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just again, to reiterate that, the modeling that we've looked at, which is done through the Tulare County Association of Governments and their countywide traffic model is indicating we're going to see over 21,000, 22,000 vehicles a day in 2030. And one of the things, because the, the initial studies on this project were done so long ago as we worked through the environmental process, it took quite a while to get, get completed. We actually took the numbers that they were projecting, you know, into a future year, which is more like today, and, and went out and looked at those numbers and concluded that, yeah, the projections were, were coming true. What we were projecting for 2010 is what we're pretty much seeing out there on the roadway today. So, we're, we're confident in the traffic modeling, that we are going to see those volumes, and that volumes at that level needs a four-lane road, not a two-lane road.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for the board.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just want to make a point to, to Mr. Rogers. I know that his, his, a lot of his comments were referring to values that were not justly compensated for in the negotiations with the consultant, but I would encourage you to continue negotiations with our staff and, and hopefully have the, the different items that you would like to be compensated for, like the removal of trees and maybe irrigation pipe or whatever there may be. Have those items compensated for through negotiations with our staff. So, don't, don't think that because this might be moving forward today or this decision might be made today, that it's not, that you're, you're stuck. Don't, don't think that.
And with that, I would make a motion to move, move forward.
I, I would second the motion, just to comment-
Moved by Vannerpool and seconded by Worthley.
Just to comment that, that the, the statement by Mr. Edwards was that, that if it goes through farm property, it should never be a four-lane freeway. Well, if that were the case, you wouldn't have the 99, I mean, most 99 traveled through Tulare County is in farm property. It's not, it's not the land it travels through, it's what's traveling on that road, and our roads are, especially between major cities like Tulare and Visalia, that population, those populations continue to grow, and the traffic will continue to grow with them, and, and that's the justification for it.
Cast your votes.
My abstention was of error. It should be a yes vote.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Mr. Fussell, number 13.
Yes. This is a public hearing for the board to consider a resolution of necessity for the Road 108 widening project for Wilbur Claire and Mary Lou Hedinga. The affected property owners are Wilbur Claire Hedinga and Mary Lou Hettinga. The affected property is commonly referred to as Assessor's Parcel Number 149, 020, 065, and is located on the west side of Road 108, south of Avenue 264. The right of way that's required is generally 43/5 and slightly more than 920 feet in length. There is also a need for an adjacent 10-foot temporary construction easement, and the specifics of the legal description and Platts are attached as Appendix A to the resolution of necessity. And here's an impact map showing the right of way that's required. It's, my mouse to work. It's a land right here. The offer package required by Government Code Section 7267.2A was made to the Hedingas on January 29th, 2009, and the package consisted of an offer of not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be just compensation for the property and the interest to be acquired. The notice was mailed to them on October 22nd, 2009 pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure 1245 dot 235, and it was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff is recommending that you conduct the hearing and then adopt the resolution of necessity based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, making the four findings that are on the screen and in the, your agenda package in accordance with state law. In addition, you will be directing county council to file the paperwork with the, with the courts, and I would also like to add that all of my comments at the very beginning of the Road 108 resolution of necessity hearings regarding the general description of the project and, and purpose and necessity be added to the record for this particular item. And with that, staff would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions on this property board? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. David Mathias. My address is 225 West Oak Avenue, Visalia. I'm appearing here today on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Hedinga. Mr. Hedinga is ill and wasn't able to attend today. Sends his apologies for that. The main issue that they wanted me to bring up is that the valuation report done by Mr. Hopper, it is believed is in violation of Government Code 7267. The appraisal of the property or the valuation of the property, basically three elements are required. The value of the property taken, the value of the improvements on the property, and the diminution in value of the remaining parcel. In Mr. Hopper's valuation, it merely evaluates and values the property to be taken. There are two very mature oak trees on the property that have significant value that were completely omitted from the valuation by Mr. Hopper, which we believe makes it an improper valuation for the Hedingas. The other thing they wanted me to express is they don't believe this project, at least across the Hedinga property, was done in mind of the least public injury. Once again, there's mature oak trees on the property that were omitted from the plan, omitted from the valuation, and we don't believe were considered as far as the direction of 108 going across the Hedinga property, and believe that that public injury should be addressed prior to this going forward. They wanted me to convey to you that they certainly respect a board decision regarding necessity and fully understand that today's hearing is one about necessity and not one about valuation, but they would like to obtain a proper valuation prior to at least a decision on necessity being made. So unless there's any questions, that's the Hedingas position.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on this particular property? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any further statements, Mr. Fussell?
I might want to just give a brief moment. First, Sims is speaking with our right of way staff regarding some of the issues that
We need to take a five-minute break, Mr. Fussell.
I can see how much longer they're going to be.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes and go into closed session while they work this out.
Sorry, one more. No, no, it's fine.
Okay, Mr. Fussell, before we bring this to the board for a vote.
As I've mentioned in the beginning of the presentation and have, have stated in some of the other hearings, during the review and design of this project, we very carefully take a look at everything that was in the corridor and tried to, you will snake an alignment through the corridor that minimizes the impact on, you know, existing structures and buildings, et cetera, to the maximum degree that we could. And that's the result of this alignment, which in this particular property moves the road over onto the western, west side of the roads, the west side of the road, and requires the necessity for this right of way.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the board then for a-
Move approval of item 13.
Moved by Ashida.
Second.
Seconded by Ennis. Unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Fussell, number 14.
Yes, this is the-
Which is our final-
Final resolution of necessity hearing on the Road 108 project this morning, and the affected property owners are the Joseph Costa and Lynn Costa Life Estate, Linda Costa and Gloria Pereira. The affected property has the, commonly referenced as Assessor's Parcel Number 149, 050, 083, and 149, 050, 082. And this is the location. It is on the northeast corner of Avenue 252 and Road 108. The right of way that's required is 31 feet in width and about 320 feet in length. In addition, there is a requirement for a 10-foot temporary construction easement that is parallel and adjacent to the right of way acquisition, and a temporary construction easement, which is necessary to remove a structure that is affected by this right of way take. And the legal descriptions in Platts, most, more specifically describing the right of way required, is attached as Appendix A to the resolution of necessity. And then here's an impact map. The right of way that's required is this area right here, the gray shaded area. The structure that's affected is this structure, and there is a, a temporary construction easement required in order for this structure to be removed from the site. The offer package required by Government Code Section 7267.2A was made to the Costas and Era on December 17th of 2008, and again, it included an offer of not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be the just compensation for the property and the interest to be acquired. Notice of the hearing on this resolution of necessity was sent on October 22nd, 2009 pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure Section 1245 dot 235, and notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff recommends this morning that your board conduct a hearing regarding the adoption of this resolution of necessity for the Road 108 widening project, and then based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four finding that's required by state law for resolution of necessity, also directing the county council to file the paperwork with the courts. And I would like to add that all of my comments relative to the project in general made at the very beginning of the Road 108 resolution of necessities be incorporated into this record as well. record as well. With that, staff would respond to any questions at the board.
Any questions?
Just a real quick one. As I looked at the map, there's one structure to be removed, the rest are remaining. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
All right, thanks. Other questions? This is the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this property, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone here present for the Costa property? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Moved by Worthley, seconded by Ennis. Your votes is unanimous.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Fussell. Next item we will take up on our calendar is item number 48, request from our Auditor Controller to select change in California per capita personal income.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Becky Carr. I am the Assistant Auditor Controller for the county. You have before you our recommendation and request for adopting the 2010 GAN spending limitation. The GAN limitation began in 1978-79. Every year since then, that number is indexed using our choice of two different factors. The number you have before you, we have chosen the per capita income of .62 to factor last year's GAN limit, and that results in the limit of one million, excuse me, one billion three hundred and ninety-five million nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for 2010. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Apologize for making you wait so long for that.
Oh, no problem.
That idea was going to be short. Entertainer motion. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Well, second.
Moved by Worthley, seconded by Vanderpool. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors.
Unanimous. Our next item on our agenda today is item number 49.
At this time...
I do have, I do have requests that have been filled out by members of the public that wish to speak to this matter. I do have five requests. We're going to, this is not a public hearing today, but we're gonna allow fifteen minutes of public comment, three minutes per speaker. You cannot waive your minutes or give them to another speaker. We'll have staff presentation and then have a fifteen-minute period for public comment. And so with that, we will move to our staff presentation.
Nina Dong, Deputy County Counsel. We are presenting today for the second reading and adoption, the ordinance as proposed on the November 3rd meeting, and also as in the current agenda item. Staff requests that you waive the second reading, adopt the ordinance, and direct the clerk to publish a summary. And I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, seeing no questions, we will use twenty after. We will allow fifteen-minute public comment period. I know several of you here. I'll first call on those that have written requests. Jeff Nunes. Morning.
Lots to talk about. I'll try to make this as quick as possible. First, I'm gonna go over the standardization of cannabis cultivation and product, production, and then I have a letter from one of our patients that is so disabled he can't be here himself and asked me to read it for him.
And you're done, I'll ask you to give that to the clerk.
Yes, sir. Tulare County's standardization of cannabis cultivation and product, production has new guidelines that has been set under federal law this last week that has recognized state rights. Land use for hospitals, laboratories, hospices, cancer centers, these is the real true place where medical marijuana needs to be associated with. Farming for legal groups needs to be in an ag zone or a commercial manufacturing. I know that Jason Laboue is doing land use, but there are different levels, different departments. I mean, a dispensary is organized and operated different than a farm. Personal use of medical marijuana under state rights, seen Section Code 11362.79 defines where a patient cannot smoke. I think, other than these places like no smoking in prohibited places by law, a thousand square feet from schools, recreational centers, youth centers, on school buses while operating a motor vehicle, while operate, or operating a boat, other than that, no patient should be persecuted for inhaling or ingesting medication. It is stated in multiple studies that cannabis is safer than tobacco. Taking medication should not be treated better than recreational use of tobacco or a strip club. Taxation of cannabis business, 1.8% sales tax, has been abducted by bigger cities that have regulations over seriousness of these regulations. Cities of the bigger north have started taxing for, I think, believe, last year. It was offered in the magazine Fortune. The taxes, the funds, these regulations of these enterprises like bakeries, collectives, clinics, farms, and processing centers and laboratories. The proceeds of our original clinic that we have right now with the Visalia Compassionate Care Center has given $34,000 back to local education, blind children, child abuse, cancer societies. Seventeen thousand of that went to the Sheriff's Association, fire department, disabled police officers, Visalia Police Departments, Wtip, and more. The status on these companies for the information center is wanting to extend education for nurses, doctors, lawyers, patients, and also, can I go on just a little bit longer, or...
We've got fifteen minutes total time. If you want to use everyone else's time, that's fine.
No, I sure don't. I think everyone deserves it. I just think one more comment is this will achieve factors of each phase of operation for accountability and actions of quality of business. Members of Tulare County Board of Supervisors, because my disability, I am impossible for me to stand before you. My concerns opposing the medical marijuana ordinance is above the vote that is passed before us, the harmful restrictions on my life that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors is gonna put on us. The board's responsibility is to accommodate people with disabilities like myself so that we can be heard, and I am speaking to, not on the board, but anyone who reads my comments on this open public. Members of the Board of Supervisors, it is important for you to understand the negativity impact placing this ordinance, like anyone smoking medical cannabis must do so inside inhabitants, private residents, not in garages or detached buildings. So you're telling me that by law, I have to smoke my medication in my house around my wife and children? My wife controls the house, my space is in the garage. What are you thinking? The county law on smoking marijuana is a misdemeanor which has been witnessed by a police officer. How are you gonna police enforce such an ordinance? This is also would mean that I would never be able to leave my private residence. This place, this places unacceptable restrictions to my quality of life, that I can live more control over my life, and I am willing to give it to you. So if you choose to make a criminal out of a person who served as a professional soldier for over six years, a police officer over eleven, so be it. I am tired of the board's self-righteous attitude on people who choose to use different drugs for their medical needs. You want to zone where I can get my medication like an adult bookstore? I have taken for granted that you people know the kind of areas the adult bookstores are located. How would you like to go to this area every time you need medication? This board is totally disrespecting the people who use medical marijuana, the sickness, the sick to my stomach, I do apologize. What makes you better than me? Getting involved, I am tired of people taking my rights away because they know what's better for me. My point is going outside and inside is clear. What is about, how, sorry, how about thinking about the environment and not your wallets? Growing outside is much cheaper and uses electricity, less electricity because of its free and less energy requirements. Electrical companies will get more. If you make growing medical marijuana only indoors, then this medication will only go up in value and the availability down. Supervisors, understand the cost, the rights of medical marijuana. To get doctor's recommendation is a hundred to twenty to $200 each year. I would love to get my county card, but it costs over $350 a year. That is the highest fee in all counties of offered by medical marijuana programs. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, do you realize how much time you've taken? Okay. Linda...
Sorry, I had to speak for two. I do apologize.
Linda Fitzpatrick, and then after Linda Fitzpatrick, Linda Mendez, Melanie Mendez, and Tammy Murray, in that order.
Good, good afternoon, distinguished supervisors. I'm Linda Fitzpatrick. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job. I'm not gonna tell you how to vote. I'm pretty sure probably most of you already know what you're going to do. What I'd like to do is put a human face on my little section of town. I'm in District Two. I come from Tipton, and in effect, I'm speaking about Earth Meds Medical Marijuana Dispensary. I cannot tell you what an asset, and I speak on behalf of many fellow people from Tipton, what an asset that this dispensary has become to us as a community. We have several projects due to the economical times that we, that are upon us, and many of the people in Tipton are unemployed. Lot of them are farmers, workers. They have no food. I didn't want to, don't wanna say Melanie, but that's Melanie Mendez who owns it. Her dispensary has donated refrigerators for the food, for Food Link. They have purchased the food, they have purchased the freight to get the food to Tipton. They've also worked with our churches. They have worked with the local library. They have donated financial support for books for the children. They have supported Tipton Elementary School. I am now, I've worked on the board with Tipton Community Council, both as a board member and the treasurer, and I've had the wonderful opportunity of working with these people. Their families, they have a job, they have house payments, they have bills to pay, their families just like us. I understand that you're going to be removing two of these, and it is my fervent wish that you please deeply consider what you're gonna do to the town of Tipton if these people are taken from us. They donate to our churches. Right now, we're working on the Christmas play that they so generously donate costumes for. They've also done, started a new project called Friday Night Movies at the United Methodist Church. So these people aren't the bad guys all the time. So I really, really hope and appreciate them and what they do for our community, and we'd be at a great loss without them. Thank you again for your time. Have a great day.
Linda Mendez, then Melanie Mendez.
Hello, I'm Linda Mendez. I was born with rheumatoid arthritis. I have had, I can't tell you how many surgeries, and I lost my leg from it, but Melanie has helped us, 'cause we're on a fixed income, and I take chemotherapy medication for this rheumatoid arthritis. And she's helped us learn how to grow it ourselves, and she works with me and my medication because there's really nothing any worse than this rheumatoid arthritis for pain. And she has given us edibles and stuff and taught us how to do it. So on the Earth Meds in Tipton, I just wish you'd leave them alone. We need them.
And after Melanie Mendez, Tammy Murray.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Tammy Murray, and I live here in Visalia. I'm the CEO and the Director of Compassionate Cannabis Information Center in Goshen. I opened that store two years ago, and of course, in the last couple of years, all I've been working on is compliance with state and federal, and now that I'm in compliance with those, now I have to face the locals. I wanted to see if I could give you one of our brochures which explains our mission statement. It explains where we're at, what, what, the way that we set us up in our organization. We're a nonprofit organization, but nonprofits can make money. There's nothing that says that nonprofits can't be profitable. We have, just like in the Tipton Dispensary, and I'm sure with Jeff Nunes, have donated a lot of money to Shriners, all kinds of organizations. The donations that come towards us have to pay our costs. I'm salaried, and so if our, if our clinic gets shut down, then I'm gonna have to go on unemployment. I have two employees that'll have to go on unemployment. We're incorporated. I know that, in a way, a lot of this stuff is, you know, still, there's so much information. It seems like the, the public, the board, the users of the medical cannabis, there just seems to not be common ground yet. We're lumped together with the entertainment, strip bars and such, and it's really kind of a disservice for those of us who, you know, I'm a military veteran. I ended up on different pain medicines, and the pain medicines are very harsh on one's digestive system. I'm a believer in this, and there's plenty of people here that are, people you wouldn't probably, you know, think that would use this as a medicine, but there's plenty of us, and they're the really, people are unspoken. They're not coming forward and saying, yes, I, you know, smoke marijuana at night to get sleep. I smoke marijuana at night to control the pain. There's a lot of things that, you know, that you don't know. The digested cannabis lasts longer. It's like eight hours versus when you smoke it, it only lasts for two hours. So there's a need for both of those things. Let me make sure that I can, we, we really just need more time. We need more time to discuss this. We need more time before adopting an ordinance to go through this. You know, Melanie and Jeff Nunes and myself, we would be happy to meet with whomever come up with. I know you guys are looking for a criteria. You don't want just anyone running these organizations. I stated in the Visalia Times Delta that was in the paper yesterday. I think the biggest fear going on here is that this industry is being run by thugs. And I, I can understand some of that, but I'm not a thug. I certainly don't believe that any of our dispensary organizers here are. Jeff Nunes, his heart has always been in the right place. We owe a big debt of gratitude for him to pave the way here, and I just, I really feel like we need to spend some more time on this and do some refinements on this ordinance. I, I certainly believe that, you know, the business license, I can understand that, even though we're in the unincorporated areas, but you guys kind of, I mean, there needs to be some kind of a system. You can't have too many of these. I can understand that in LA, there's 169 of them. If they justify it and their economy will support it, fine, you know, Tulare County could put a cap on it, but I would hope that you would grandfather the ones that, that have existed here in. So I'm hoping you'll keep me here. And in Goshen, I've got quite a few people here that would like to speak to keep us in Goshen as well, but it looks like we...
They're not gonna be able to speak. You've used up the time.
I know. I could speak for a lot longer, too. A lot longer.
Sure, you could.
Anyway, I appreciate you listening, and hopefully we can take some more time on the refinements on this ordinance.
Melanie, we'll give you your three minutes.
Hi, I'm Melanie Mendez. I live in Tulare, work in Tipton at Earth Meds. And my concern is the cap on the dispensaries. I'm sure I don't need to tell you how large a landmass Tulare County encompasses, and the five that currently exist each serve a different representation of the community. There's not a concentration in any one place. No one community is overrepresented. You have one in Goshen, you have one in Ivanhoe, you have one in Exeter, you have one in Visalia, and you have one in Tipton. I mean, we serve, we're closest to everyone in Porterville, Alpo, Allensworth, Earlymark, Ducor, Terabella, Pixley, Tipton, as well as the mountainous communities. If you take away their choices in rural communities where public transportation is not an option, it makes it that much harder for those patients to obtain the medication that they need. It's hard enough for them to find me in Tipton sometimes. They can only come once or twice a month because of the economy or other factors, and I think that you need to make sure that Tulare County is geographically well-represented when you decide which dispensaries. And I would like to also reiterate what Tammy said and say that the five that are existing and that have not been a problem, I know that we've never had the Sheriff's Department out for anything. In fact, we've helped local law enforcement twice with our extensive surveillance catching crimes in neighboring businesses. So, I would also like to ask that the ones that are already in existence be allowed to operate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Staff, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, sir, not unless you have any questions after the comments that have been made.
Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Would, would County Council please clarify the, this ordinance will basically not take effect until a certain point, and I believe that point is when state and federal law have reached some sort of conformity in how this subject will be handled and dispensaries will be handled.
The way the ordinance is currently configured, it, at least most parts of it, do not take effect until the time that you described. Blurs would call that a condition precedent. That does not mean that there are not other legal issues with dispensing of medical marijuana. The Attorney General of California has opined on that. He has issued guidelines regarding what is and is not legal. We now have some, small bit of case law. Everybody here who's spoken has used the word dispensary. The Attorney General has specifically said dispensaries are not recognized under California law. Only collectives and cooperatives are. They may be a collective or a cooperative, I don't know. The Compassionate Use Act, in large part, is a defense to a criminal charge under state law. And essentially, people operate or grow or dispense at their own risk. I'm not gonna tell them what is and is not within the confines of criminal law. They should get criminal attorneys to do that. But the fact that this is in place does not mean that your board has authorized the activity. It does not change the state law regulation, and all of this is still illegal under federal law. Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
You have about one minute.
Okay. The reason why this has been incorrectly categorized, they have put marijuana in with heroin and cocaine, and this is what's caused a lot of the problem.
You're talking about the state law?
I'm talking about the federal law. The federal categorization of this is what is holding us up, but I do believe that's gonna be changing.
And we don't have jurisdiction over federal law.
Ma'am, that's federal law. We have no effect over that. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I need to consult our council.
Okay. We are going to adjourn, I guess, to closed session here for a couple of minutes, and we'll be right back. Motion. Bring this back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we waive the second reading in a doff ordinance as presented. Move by Worthley.
Well, and I, and I think before, before we second it, I, I think that what, what this is doing, if you actually read what's in the ordinance, you know, I don't think that anyone is questioning the merits of medicinal marijuana. I know people who use medicinal marijuana. No one's questioning the merits, what is being questioned here, and the parameters that are being established are we are waiting for state and federal law to come into compliance. You know, how can something be legal here in Tulare County because the state says so, but the feds don't agree with that? So, it really is a very difficult thing for our Sheriff's Department to enforce anything when the law hasn't even come into agreement. So, what this is doing is, I believe, establishing a set of parameters that we will use going forward once agreement is reached by the state and federal laws. And so, with that, I will second the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to also make a statement before we take a vote. If this ordinance does pass, I'd like to review six months after the ordinance takes effect, and I'd like to have staff put that on note, that the board, I personally would like to have review the effective ordinance.
The ordinance would be effective if the board adopts it today on December tenth, so that would be a meeting close to June tenth.
Somewhere around six months.
Okay. So, we have a motion to second. Cast your votes. It's unanimous. Thank you, Board. Okay, our last item we have, our close to last, is item number fifty. Request from Resource Management Agency, actually requested by Supervisor Worthley to be brought and discussed at the board today.
Chair members of the board, this is being presented to the board at the request of Supervisor Worthley. Staff has prepared the staff report, which provides a summary based on the board's action on February tenth, two thousand and nine. They adopted resolution two thousand and nine dash zero zero nine one, which established two new policies to be implemented by RMA. Based upon a number of factors, including the non-payment of the state's subventions, new implementation, implementing programs by RMA to review Williamson Act contracts, and filing of notices of non-renewal on existing Williamson Act contracts found not to be consistent with the requirements of the program, has initiated the, this proposed stay for the board's consideration. If the board approves the stay, basically, what it will do is authorize the RMA director to waive the previous conditions upon, opposed upon projects that wanted to modify their Williamson Act contracts in some way, either by filing a partial notice of non-renewal or a lot line adjustment or other factors and such. Based upon the previous board's direction, conditions were imposed upon those projects to amend their existing Williamson Act contracts to be reflective of the new policies of the board. And so, if the board does pass this, basically, the policy that would authorize the board to unilaterally declare the contracts terminated would be waived and not imposed until a later date. And secondly, the policy for the language required from the County of Humboldt versus McKee case, which basically said that new contracts would have to comply with any new zoning or development criteria established by the county. And so, that concludes the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions of the board, and-
Let the record show Supervisor Ashida has recused himself from this item as he has been required to in the past, and we have some questions of-
Oh, sure. I think if I might make a comment. I had requested this because in the past, when we, we created this situation, it was looking into the future at some point and saying, well, if at some point the state stops subventing, we'd like to have this language that says that the county's election, the county may choose to declare that the agreement is, Williamson Act contract is null and void. And that would be based upon the fact that there's some discretionary land use request made by a person who now holds one of these contracts. What has changed, obviously, is that at this point, the state has stopped subventing, and notwithstanding the fact that there's a thousand dollars in the kitty, I think we have case law, which would indicate that that doesn't really qualify as, as meeting the criteria of actually meeting the requirement of actual consideration. I have, however, given a lot of thought to this, and I know in a conversation that I've had with Supervisor Cox, and perhaps the simplest way to deal with this would be not to change our current standard, but would rather be to have another side agreement, if you will, to this that says, given the fact that the county, that we are now in this situation, the county will not declare the contract null and void pending some further, some further global resolution. The reason I say that is, we know we're gonna have to make some hard choices in the, in the coming year, and it's, and much of it's dependent upon what happens at Sacramento. But in the event that the subvention dollars do not come back to, to local jurisdictions, to county governments, we're gonna have to do something here in Tulare County. We cannot probably just walk away from three and a half million dollars of subvented monies every year, given our financial difficulties we have now providing services, and so, we're gonna have to do something to, to, to deal with that. And the idea here is that since we're gonna have to have some kind of global change, the Williamson Act contracts, we're not trying to treat people differently because they have, they've got these discretionary acts going on right now. The problem is that life goes on. While we're waiting for something to happen in Washington, in Sacramento, and we're coming up with some sort of a global resolution of this issue, things are happening right now. People are trying to sell property, they're trying to buy property, there's a requirement of lot line adjustments, so there's, there's different things that are happening, and it's created a problem processing these things, apparently. It's not been moving along very quickly, and I'm sure because our staff is trying to figure what are we gonna do now that things have changed. So, one approach is to leave things as they are, but, but by letter, I suppose, advise the people that were requiring these, this language to be inserted in their contract, that the county will not seek unilaterally to declare their contract null and void until such time as they have reached some global resolution dealing with all Williamson Act contracts. And perhaps that would solve the problem going forward of, because I hate to lose the opportunity, I know that's Mr. Cox's concern, is if we allow these discretionary land use acts to occur without taking advantage of the opportunity to insert this language, then it's lost forever. We haven't, we don't, I mean, we have to go through the usual process of a ten-year non-renewal process.
Not forever, just ten years.
Yeah, ten years.
Ten years. So, and it's not really fair to other property owners that we have imposed this requirement upon, that we would treat these people differently. So, that way, they're all treated the same, both in terms of whether, it doesn't matter when you've, you've requested discretionary act, you're still gonna have this language as a part of that condition, and you will all be treated the same in terms of how we're going to, the county's gonna to deal with that in the futures, future dates, so.
For me, I don't wanna second guess myself. I think the decision we made was the right one. None of the, nothing has changed since we made this decision. There were properties that were in escrow, that were moving around, that people were doing things before. I think the decision this board made was the right one. We needed to protect ourselves, knowing that sometime in the future, there could be this problem. Well, you know what? The future is here. I'm not gonna second guess myself. So, I, and I understand what you're saying, and I could support that, but that's not what we're being asked to do today. Today, we're being asked to make null and void the resolution that we did, and I'm not willing to vote for that. I would be willing to revisit it and add, like you're saying, another criteria in there as long as it doesn't lose our opportunity to insert this language, which, which I think we all fought for very hard.
Am I being clear about what I was trying to, trying to accomplish?
I, I, let me restate what I interpret what you said. Basically, business as usual. The contracts would be amended to include the new language. We would do a letter, informational letter to the applicants advising that it's not the intent of the board to declare the contract null and void.
At this time?
At this time. We can do that administratively at the direction of the board.
That might send a great message, too, to the property owners, is we're trying to resolve this issue and, and develop a global fix for this. So, I mean, I think I could, I could be in support of that. I don't wanna, you know, do away with this. I think this is the right thing to do, but I think it would send a very good message to these property owners. We just sent a message to three hundred and fifty-some that, you know, no, no, you can't. But I think that would send a good message to people that, you know, we're trying to find a global solution to this until we find, and it's not our intent to punish you, but this is language that we want inserted in every contract that changes. I think that's kinda where you're going, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the rest of your career with the-
Well, I, you know, I just, obviously, you know, my perspective and representing my constituents is just making sure that we continue to encourage ag land preservation, and that is obviously the most important thing in any vote that I make, but knowing the state that we're in financially and what the state of California can impose upon us, I think that it is important to include this language so that the landowners and property owners are too aware that what, the situation that we're in. And so, I do think that that's an important component to add, and that also the letter to provide information to them is also important as well. That's my feeling.
Is that just something we can bring back, then, without taking action on this?
If you just, I'm, I'm sorry, but my, my understanding is, is if you just provide direction for RMA staff to provide the side letter in relationship to their action, our action, then I think that would be sufficient, and we could receive that direction today and implement that at the direction by the RMA director.
Yeah, because nothing could've changed in the actual, we're still gonna require the language. The only difference is that it's that discretionary act on our part to determine whether or not we're going to now declare something null and void. That's not our intention today to do that.
Right.
So, I think, I, I think we could just do that by consensus of the board, then, and direction of the staff.
We do have an action for us, so-
And one last comment from my perspective. The way the language is set up, it says, it gives the ability, the authority to the board. It doesn't say that you're going to exercise it. And I think the side letter will just clarify that, what the board's intent is, talking about the global issue relating to the state's subventions, and we'd ask everyone to support the counties and to, to ensure that we receive that money back.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the action, I would just move that we table this matter, and we don't even have a date set for having it back, but we'll just table it so it's, it's there to bring it back.
That motion?
Yeah.
So, moved.
And I would agree with that. I would second that.
Second. By Vanderpool. It's unanimous, four oh. Ashida being, having recused himself. It is, we're to number two now, Public Comics. Anyone wanting to address the board?
Did a good job, Mr. Chairman.
On an item that's not on today's agenda, seeing none, we will move to number three, Board of Supervisors Matters. Do we have any supervisor?
No, I was just going, he's already gone now, but I was just gonna reiterate Mike Boudreau's promotion, congratulate him and recognize him on that. I know it's, he was very pleased, and I think that the county continues to move good people up into good positions, so I'm just gonna congratulate him on that.
Supervisor Worthley? Nothing. Vanderpool?
I would also like to reiterate the congratulations to now Captain Mike Boudreau. I'd also like to wish all the veterans out there a happy Veterans Day, which is tomorrow, and thank them again for their service to the United States, to our country, and to our lives that we have here today, and I thank you on behalf of a beneficiary of their service, thank them for theirs. And then also, just would like to add to all those out there listening, that we are beginning efforts to find ways to bring together all of the efforts that are taking place in Tulare County to showcase our greatest asset, our agriculture, similar to programs taken on a countywide level in San Joaquin County. So, I sure look forward to continuing to work and bring a countywide campaign to showcase our agriculture here to Tulare County.
Do we need to bring Supervisor Ashida back for Supervisor Matters? You wanna tell us about his vacation to Hawaii so we can all be upset? Unless you think we are done, we still have closed session items to attend to while we're looking for Supervisor Ashida. Would you like to tell us which items we still have on our closed session agenda?
We have item B and item O remaining. Chairman, I do not anticipate any announcements.
Okay, Supervisor Ashida, would you like to tell us about your vacation? Unfortunately, you missed the public comment period.
Well, I'd like to thank the chairman for letting everybody know I was on vacation.
Well, if you'll look out, I think everybody knew.
But there was a work-
But it was a working vacation, and I learned that a resort the size of the Marriott on Oahu, they only had three smoking stations. You could only, you could not smoke on your balconies. You could not smoke around the pool. The only place you could smoke were the three stations on their property and the beach, which was public access. So, these guys complaining about smoking their dope, you know, out in the open air, well, they ought to find out if the same thing applies to cigarettes. And I feel the same discrimination that they do.
And we felt for you.
But the one thing I do want to say, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to because the audience is gone, but I think this Step Up Program that we initiated several years ago is, has been and is very successful, and largely due to the chairman's leadership of letting it become a grassroots-type program where the community found its own way on, like, on these grants. I'm very pleased, the fact, the mentoring of high school kids mentoring these young kids.
Oh, yeah.
And to see these books that were put together in Peach District, I mean, all of us sitting here probably will never have a bound edition of anything we ever produce. But I did want to say that to the public, that this has been a real fine program, and I think we need to keep in contact with Feinstein's office, Phil, her gang bill that she's trying to write. Typically, the federal government will dictate the program and end up throwing all kinds of money at it, where we've been able to accomplish so much with relatively little-
Very small amount of money.
... economy.
Okay. And we do keep the pressure on. Okay, we are going to adjourn to closed session.